Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem for Monday, January 27, 2020 to order. If the recorder will call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Kizer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nanki.
I'm here.
Commissioner Leung.
Here.
Commissioner Osik.
Here.
Chair Hoi.
Here.
Commissioner Nordike.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to introduce the law act of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, undoubted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Kizer, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, we do not have any additions or deletions.
Thank you. We're checking now on people signed up for public comment. Just one moment, please. And nobody has signed up for public comment, so Vice Chair Kizer, consent calendar, please.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
It's been moved in second.
The consent calendar consists of one item, item 3.1A, which are minutes from the December 9 Salem Housing Authority meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no public hearings and no special orders of business, so we are on information reports. And I see that we have Ms. Oates here with us tonight. And I would just like to start by saying thank you for the training that you, your staff put on and coordinated on Thursday on the homeless brain. I thought it was, I don't know how many folks were in attendance, maybe 50 or more folks, but it was really high-quality training. And I would encourage all of my colleagues to sign up for that if you get the opportunity, or perhaps there's a way we can present it so the other counselors could hear it as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm Nicole Yussam, the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And touching on that, we did have a wonderful turnout. We anticipated probably about 80-plus that were actually at that event. We were getting pretty close to our capacity. And out of that outcome, we have received several new landlords. In fact, one that contacted us today with four open units ready to go for the HRAP program. So I do encourage anybody who hasn't seen that to be able to get and connect with that. We will be holding another one of those, a longer version of it, in May. So.
Great. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not able to be there, and I hope in May, it might be early May, because I'll be out of town from about mid-May onward. And I'd really like to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm going to be gone the first week of May, and I really want to go.[189.23][189.23](Laughter).
So let me help out everybody. We are working with CCTV to see if maybe this can be a covered one.
Commissioner Nordike.
That was exactly my thought. I think that, you know, the time was a great time to have it for a number of folks, and I so appreciate the leadership that your organization is taking on this, along with Stephen Goins. And the fact of the matter is, the more that folks understand homelessness, the more they can understand how they can help. Because everyone can do something to support it. And I do recommend putting it on YouTube, CCTV, as soon as possible, because with folks with young families, or caring for a loved one, or any other number of reasons when life intervenes, I think having this available online so that anyone can watch it would be to our benefit. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And we do thank Northwest Human Services and Stephen Goins for that partnership that we have and our ability to work as a team for that. So on top of that, just a few, as you see in the Program Management Report, you kind of have a rundown of some of the history of the Housing Authority in the past year, including in the voucher lease-up. We have 367 new household or clients that have leased up in that program. And as you will see, in our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, 23 families graduated from family self-sufficiency, which is a five-year program that helps them meet their goals and continue some of that, sometimes homeownership, paying off debt, different items. Some of them move on and out of housing as a goal. Many of them achieve employment, stable employment, and they're off any sort of assistance. The HRAP team continues to have great outcomes, and as you can see in that, one of our clients did go into full self-sufficiency and has a full-time job as a peer support counselor. But on that, on top of that, tonight, I wanted to take the moment to address the fact that we did have, we do have one female that had come to a forum, and recently, in one of the recent forums over the homeless sit-by ban, who needed assistance, and we were able to coordinate with Arches to get them assessed and into the HRAP program. Within a three-month period of time, they have been housed, and they're working on stability. We've also had their wraparound case manager services with the HRAP program help them navigate through the medical system, and she is now seeing fully out of one of her eyes. So that's a great hurdle. And we're happy that we can continue to make progress in helping that family out. There's many other things the Housing Authority does in the community, and it is a collaboration of many partners, including the Shop With A Cop event, National Night Out. So in the upcoming year, our goal is to just continue to build on our community partnerships, and I'm open for any questions.
Can you remind us how many individuals have been housed in the HRAP program so far?
So, as of the time of this report, it said 265. We're, I believe, we're close to 267 at this point, going on to 69, so we have two more placements coming.
That's excellent. And as a reminder for the public, those are people who have been homeless for a significant amount of time with multiple barriers to being housed, and we've managed to get them into long-term housing.
That's correct.
That's excellent work. Thank you, and congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Oates? Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing no further items on our agenda, we are adjourned.
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for Monday, January 27. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kizer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Dis.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoi.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Okay. Approval of additions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
That would entail item 3.3B is, has been reordered to become item 5. C under special orders of business, and 5. B now has a report added.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counsel, comments. Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to say I very much appreciate it. We had a presentation on, and a staff report earlier today, on our homeless rental assistance program and other successful programs. And I encourage city staff to update us on a regular basis on our homelessness crisis, perhaps as part of a city manager's report. But I think that the public wants to know what we are doing to address our homelessness crisis. And I know the city disseminates press releases and other materials, and to me, I see our city council meetings as one more opportunity for the public to get to know what we are doing to address this crisis, to provide everyone with the same level of information. So I would just encourage our mayor, our city council, and our city manager to provide routine updates on the kinds of programs that are working, like HRAP, like programs that, like HRAP, are getting folks employed and off the streets once and for all. So I just want us to encourage that information down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I think that's just really good advice. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring attention to the public that earlier this morning, it looks like it was reported in the Salem Reporter, that Sprague High School was tagged with Swaziland racist and homophobic graffiti. And I spoke with Gretchen Bennett, city staff, who's also a part of the Human Rights Commission, and that, from my understanding, that if people in the community have any concerns or any follow-up that they want to share, to reach out to Gretchen for further information or to provide her with any further information.
Great. Thank you. Gretchen is in the mayor's office, the mayor manager's office, so feel free to call in if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Counselor Leung. Counsel, I just, I know you've received an email I want to share with you and the public that we lost a tremendously valued city worker, Richard Swires. He'd worked in our Public Works Department for over 20 years, and he passed away last week. For those of you who've been on the council for a while, Richard was a regular attender on behalf of his union, AFSMI. He was a tremendous volunteer in the community, and he also was the fellow, if you had a water leak in the off-hours, Richard was the guy that came to your house with a smile, and he was on-call to take care of those. He was just a tremendous guy, a real loss to, to the city of Salem's working community as well as to the broader community. We're very, very sorry to lose him. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, I wanted to update counsel and the public that I have signed the emergency order. The emergency order will allow the waiver of land use regulations to allow the United Way Safe Sleep Shelter to expand to 19 persons, 19 women from the current occupancy of 10, and also to allow the start of the authorized vehicle camping program. And that will be, that will be underway as interest in that program is received by community development. Also, I've asked the police chief to provide you with, with an update on our efforts regarding some behaviors and activities in the downtown that have caused some, some concerns. So Chief Moore is here to provide a brief, a brief update. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, Jerry Moore, Police Chief. I want to let you know, just as you are and the community is, we are well aware of the issues that surround some of the activity that's going on in the downtown area. And I'll tell you that since council action to declare camping illegal, we have certainly placed a priority on utilizing our resources in that downtown area. That includes, of course, our Patrol Division, our Downtown Enforcement Team, our Behavioral Health Unit, and our problem-oriented policing team. And we have tried to do what we can to alleviate the concerns, the fear, and the issues of people who frequent the downtown area. As you know, there was a cleanup there recently by Public Works, and when we were there to assist with moving folks out of the area so that the, the business could do its job with cleaning the sidewalks, we also brought with us members of Arches, UGM, the Housing Authority, and the lead coordinators to see if we could assist people in getting services that they are sometimes reluctant to do. Outside of that, I can tell you our officers are alert to violations that are occurring in that downtown area based solely on their behavior, not their status, and we have been quick to take action where we are able to do so. I've gone through there almost daily, and I can tell you that while some of the visions is unsightly in the area, it is my belief that we have eliminated tents, almost all tents, and structures that can be utilized for sleeping as the ordinance dictates. Most people have been compliant with this, someone, some of them are a little more reluctant than others, but we have convinced them that that is probably not what they should do. We've also received reports of drug dealing in, by some of the folks that are down there, and I'm told our officers have made contact with those folks, and for whatever reason, they have decided to go elsewhere and have left that downtown area and are no longer there. We talk about exclusion quite often, and I want to let you know that in the downtown core, since December 17 till today, we have seen an increase of about 65% exclusions compared to the same time last year. Our officers are being alert to behavior and are taking action where they can, and most of the exclusions are for trespass, drugs, and disorderly conduct, which are most of the issues that we are excluding people for. So I just want to let you know, as the city manager requested, that we are alert to the issues, and we're trying to give it the best attention that we can.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chief Moore, for your work, and more importantly, your staff's work. This is, as we all know from various meetings, a very intractable problem, and you folks are some of the people on the front line. My question relates to, you said a 65% increase. Could you give, do you have the actual numbers? In other words, how many people last year, and then how many people this year?
30 last year, 49 this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chief. By the way, we got a, a report that came out in a press release on your enforcement activities, traffic enforcement activities. Do you happen to, you don't have that committed memory, do you, that over the past month?
Why not?
And why not? Yeah.[1066.42][1066.42](Laughter).
Well, those are both tough questions. I, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, but I do have some information.
Maybe Upke's could. It was very good. In other words, you guys did over 1,200 vehicle-related citations during that period from DUII to speeding. It was a very impressive report.
We do put additional units out during the holiday season, and they are certainly looking for violators and especially intoxicated drivers.
Well, we sure appreciate it. We're really, I know, as you know from Counselor Anderson and all the rest of us, we're very concerned about safety on those, on those streets here in the city. And the citations you issued appeared really focused on trying to add to the sense of safety, pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, and then those of us who actually drive around town and don't want to get T-boned. I really do appreciate the work you're doing.
Absolutely. And I do, I think you're going to talk about perhaps some issues with traffic safety later, and I do have some information about our accidents and photo red light and speed on green, if that would be helpful.
I'm sure it will be. Thank you. Counselor Kizer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. And I want to go back to the last topic you were describing, because I had a question formulated, but not quite yet. Would you be able to describe the population downtown that are the unsheltered sidewalk campers? Because I've heard varying things. I've heard people describe them as they're waiting to get shelter. I've heard others say they don't want shelter, or it's a mixed bag. Do you have a sense of what that community kind of looks like from your officers and what they're encountering, what they're hearing from, from the people who are staying and living on the sidewalks right now?
I do. I think many of the people that we're dealing with downtown, we've been dealing with for three years, I would guess that almost, well, I would say every individual down there has been offered some sort of service and has declined. I would say there are a great deal of people down there with mental health issues, with alcohol or drug addictions. And I would, I would say that while we do everything in our power and with our partner agencies, most of these people are not interested in going to any of the shelters, and for a variety of reasons, whether it's their, they have a pet, or whether it's because they have a male-female relationship that they don't want to be broken up. But I would guess a great deal of it is they don't want to follow the rules that are required at many of the places that are available.
Yes, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Chief Moore. So I had attended a meeting by Kahoots, the mobile response unit based out of Eugene. And as I understand it, they're a mobile response unit that provides a paramedic and a mental health professional in a van. They're piped into their 911 dispatch, and they free up first responders like our police as well as other types of first responders like firefighters for higher acuity calls. The way that the Kahoots folks explained it to us is that the paramedic can do onsite wound care and also save expensive trips to the ER. I'm just wondering, has Salem PD taken a look at a mobile response unit? As I understand it, there's fundraising underway through United Way and other partners. I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts on that? Do you think that is something that, if they were able to acquire the funding, would help free up time for your police officers?
Counselor, I'm very familiar with Kahoots, and if they had, if we had a program that was identical to Kahoots in Eugene, I would be ecstatic. I can tell you what I think, I think United Way is doing the best they can to raise funds to try and put something in place here. But I will tell you the difference between what the United Way is trying to do and what Kahoots does in Eugene is night and day. The issues for, here in town is we have no sobering center, we don't have enough shelters, we don't have a place where the Kahoots folks in Eugene can transport people. And with the model that is being designed here in Salem, while I appreciate that effort, I don't want anyone to get any false hopes that it is going to resemble the Eugene Kahoots model in any way. I have talked with the fire chief, and we both agree that a reduction in minor calls would be a great thing here. But if the people that respond in a Kahoots model here don't have any place to transport those people, then they're going to be calling police and fire, just as occurs today. So while I applaud the effort, I just want to make sure people are aware that they are not the same animal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. And then my last item regarding this topic, we are scheduling another sidewalk cleanup for Thursday, so as not to interfere with Wednesday's point-in-time count. And it will be in the, in the Rite Aid area starting Thursday morning.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, we'll go to presentations.
Sorry, thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm delighted to be here with you this evening. My name is Angie Aniwuchi. I'm president and CEO of Travel Salem. And I'm here to talk with you about our 2020 to 2025 strategic plan. I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Jack Lee Young, who serves on our board, and thank you for your service. I'd also like to recognize staff Courtney Bush and Renee Frazier, who contribute a lot of energy and insight to our efforts. This plan was reviewed by the CTPAB Board, the Cultural Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, on January 14, and is recommended to you this evening for your approval. We re-envisioned our missions, mission statement to be concise and clear about why we exist and what economic development benefits we provide for our communities. The new mission statement embraces the emphasis on sustainable destination development and a commitment to the people who call this place home. This slide shows what differentiates our market and what assets establish our competitive advantage. We stacked the Salem region against various markets across the state and compared the strengths of each. Salem and the Midlamet Valley have well-rounded assets in all of these categories, whereas some of our competitors have strengths limited to one category. Our well-rounded menu of assets puts us at a competitive, competitive advantage. We have all the great things visitors who come to Oregon are looking for, hence our tagline, "The Most Oregon Part of Oregon." We did a deep dive into the defining characteristics of our region to identify those assets that make the Salem region truly unique. Destinations all across the US pitch their culinary culture and recreation as the best to be found anywhere. Yet those are also our three pillars, the things that define who we are as well. So it is imperative that we hone our storytelling to capture the essence of what makes our assets wholly unique, marketing that unveils the characters and story of place that belong to our destination, that reveal the heart and soul of Salem and the Midlamet Valley. This map shows Salem and the region by community, and the wealth of diversity of assets that make the Midlamet Valley the most Oregon part of Oregon. Collectively, this wealth of destination provides the impetus for visitors to stay longer, to explore and experience the Mo Po Bounty, which results in significant economic impact and job creation. Across the globe, the role of the destination marketing organization is changing, as we expand beyond the traditional function of tourism marketing to include responsible growth of the destination as a whole. This shift to a Destination Marketing and Management Organization, or DMMO, deploys a thoughtful approach that galvanizes communities and protects the destination's character and sense of place. As a DMMO, Travel Salem will continue to collaborate with business leaders, policymakers, and residents on stewardship and positioning the destination for long-term sustainability. Travel Salem delivers success measured by these key performance measurements: through proactive collaboration and profitable partnerships, the pursuit of conscious innovation, and the ability to adapt quickly with turnkey solutions. One message, many voices. This is a two-pronged strategy focused on aligning messaging strategies through the many voices in our community. The first strategy seeks to unify a communication strategy for economic development efforts across the region. There is strong evidence showing that communities whose key stakeholders work together around a shared vision and align on messaging strategies are achieving greater success in tourism development, attracting top talent and investment, and ultimately driving economic prosperity. The second strategy seeks to build community awareness as a launchpad to more effective tourism marketing efforts. In order to responsibly grow tourism in Salem, it's critical for residents to understand not only how the visitor industry positively impacts the community through job creation and quality of life, but also how residents contribute to the tourism engine as ambassadors for the brand. The Salem Tourism Promotion Area went into effect on January 1 of this year. The initiative is designed to advance the region's competitive position and increase market share. STPA marketing efforts will focus on the shoulder season, November through March, with an STPA committee overseeing Travel Salem's work. The committee will be chaired by Scott Snyder of The Grand Hotel. The ultimate goals for the STPA are to drive increases in occupancy and average daily rate, which will also help grow Salem's TOT revenues. As part of the STPA efforts, Travel Salem has committed and dedicated staff time to work with the cultural heritage sector to assist with planning, collaboration, and Lastly, this chart provides an overview of the core areas of focus for the strategic plan and the objectives and measurements associated with each. The main emphasis of the plan is to differentiate our destination, enhance the visitor experience, manage the destination, and embrace a cohesive, destination-wide messaging The Salem Tourism Promotion Area went into effect on January 1st of this year. The initiative is designed to advance the region's competitive position and increase market share. STPA marketing efforts will focus on the shoulder season, November through March, with an STPA committee overseeing Travel Salem's work. The committee will be chaired by Scott Snyder of the Grand Hotel. The ultimate goals for the STPA are to drive increases in occupancy and average daily rate, which will also help grow Salem's TOT revenues. As part of the STPA efforts, Travel Salem has committed and dedicated staff time to work with the cultural heritage sector to assist with planning, collaboration, and evaluation. Lastly, this chart provides an overview of the core areas of focus for the strategic plan and the objectives and measurements associated with each. The main emphasis of the plan is to differentiate our destination, enhance the visitor experience, manage the destination, and embrace a cohesive, destination-wide messaging strategy. Travel Salem has shifted from a three-year horizon to a five-year strategic plan, which will allow us to tackle complex development opportunities that require longer ramp-up times and rollout times. On behalf of our entire Board of Directors, our staff, and the industry, we want to thank you for your continued partnership and dedication to improving our community through collaborative tourism promotion. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you, Angie. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you for coming, Angie. I really have more of a comment in that I commend you and encourage you with your cooperation with the cultural people. I know there's been some concern about that in past years, and I think both of you, both sides of this, the heads-in-bed people and the cultural people have moved together, and that's very helpful. And so, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Great. Well, oops, just a sec. Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. Just a quick question. What, could you explain the main difference between a DMO and a DMMO?
So we have traditionally, well, the industry as a whole has referred to destination marketing organizations, so focused mostly on marketing efforts through social media, public relations, website, visitor center work. But the trend is moving now to look at managing the destination as well. So there are some destinations across the country, we have even a couple here in the state of Oregon like Bend, who are experiencing over tourism. So the residents that live there are frustrated by the volume of visitors that are coming and how those visitors interact with the destination, how they actually care for the assets that are there. Are they abusing the trails? Are they going off-trail, leaving trash and garbage and things like that on the beaches as well and so forth? So organizations like ours are looking more in the broader scope of the health of the destination. So not only do we want to market a beautiful place to live, work, and play, but we want to care for it. We want to be stewards of the destination. So that's the shift of looking at more how you engage and interact with transportation, public safety, water sources, parks and recreation, and the gamut. Thank you for the question.
Good work. Thank you very much. Okay, public comment. Okay, this is an opportunity for public comment. Remind you again, please introduce yourself, your ward or address, and at two minutes, the yellow light will come on. At three minutes, the red light will come on, and you should just stop talking, or I will interrupt you and ask you to stop talking. It's your choice. But, but you will stop talking at three minutes. Please, please. Dana Buckdevine, followed by Rebecca Smith. Dana, Dana, I'm going to ask you to hold with me for just a sec. I see something here I didn't realize. Rebecca, do you want to come up first? Yeah. And then I'm going to have Marilyn, no, I'm going to have Jamie French follow you. Ms. Marilyn? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rebecca Smith. I'm the current president of the Center 50+ Advisory Commission. And I just wanted to start today by saying, expressing thanks to all of you and to the city for its consistent support for the Center 50+. It really shows the, the quality of a city government that's willing to support and invest in the lives of its aging population, and that's greatly appreciated. I hope you all know and feel comfortable with saying that Center 50+ is a staple in our community. So many people benefit from the services and programs that are provided there that otherwise may have to go without. This, this center provides connection in this ever-growing, isolating, wireless world. And we're all greatly aware of the consequences isolation and loneliness can have on the human body. It, it not only affects you physically, but mentally and emotionally as well. And it does crazy things like shorten your, shorten your lifespan and weaken your immune system, and it can cause depression. But here at Center 50+, we combat that every single day. As you can see in your annual reports, every single day, almost 1,000 people enter the doors, and they choose to be part of Center 50+. They choose to attend over 250 classes to learn a new trade, to learn a new topic, to express curiosity. They choose the gym to, to increase their wellness overall, to increase their mobility, to increase their balance, to avoid falls. They choose to volunteer thousands of hours every year, donating time and energy. Every day, people choose Center 50+ as a hub of their lives. This is where they've made their connections. This is where friendships are formed and relationships grow. But on the flip side of that coin, every single day, there's thousands of people in the city of Salem that cannot participate in those activities because they may be living in an assisted-living facility. And those folks don't have the same advantage to receive opportunities to fight isolation and loneliness. And so that's why we actually go to them as well. The programs at Center 50+ are not confined to four walls in a brick-and-mortar building. Two years ago, a pilot program called the Friendship Brigade was created to address that issue of loneliness and isolation. And what this program does is it takes 100 volunteers to make 1,000 weekly visits to 15 nursing facilities. The goal is simple. No one should ever feel forgotten or alone. And so with all of that, Center 50+ is combating loneliness and isolation every single day. And with your continued support, we're fighting loneliness every single day together. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca, thank you too, to you and Marilyn for inviting me to the Cup of Joe event this weekend. That was really great. And the theme of friendship, I thought, was really telling in terms of how people responded and the work being done out at 50+. It's a great, great program. Thank you. Jamie French.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Jamie French, Chair of the Salem Historic Landmarks Commission. You will find more information in the annual report that you guys have, but I'm here tonight to share some of our highlights. We're currently updating the historic preservation plan as part of the R. Salem Comprehensive Plan. Citizens can participate in two ways currently. First is by suggesting properties for historic designation through the interactive map on the city's website, and second, by participating in our open house February 5th at the Willamette Heritage Center. The plan and suggested code amendments should be ready for council this summer. Our annual This Place Matters photo contest and our annual Toolbox Grant Program open next month. This is the sixth year of our photo contest and the ninth year of our grant program. The grant program has given out over $78,000 in grants to private homeowners. This month, we also received national recognition from the Society for Historical Archaeology for the work done on the Chinese Shrine and Pioneer Cemetery. I invite everyone to join us April 4th for the third annual Qingming Festival taking place at the shrine. And last, the city's tribal outreach program has grown immensely this year. As you know, with the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron on the agenda tonight. We look forward to continuing this work by pursuing similar agreements with the Confederate Tribes of the Slets Indians and the Confederate Tribes of the Warm Springs. These agreements show our commitment to improving and strengthening communication and cooperation between the city and the tribes with deep ties to Salem. The Historic Landmarks Commission asked me to pass along their appreciation and thanks for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
When, Jamie, thank you for the work you and the other volunteers do. When is the, on February 5th, is the program at, at the Willamette Heritage Center?
I believe it's at 5:00 PM in the dye house. Yep.
Then I can add it on my little calendar on my phone here. 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down and talking about the report. And wanted to say that I attended the first work, or open house, or can't remember what we called it, workshop. And there was, I think, around 35, 40 people, which is, I think, the most I've seen come out for a historic preservation, heritage-related thing within the city. That was pretty great to get that kind of turnout, so keep up the good work. And then, second, the MOU with Grand Ron is such a, a big accomplishment for the city. I don't think people realize just how much work those are to create and how significant that really is for our city. So congrats also on, on all of that work.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. We'll give you the date on that, that signing. We'll be having a signing ceremony here. We just have to remember the date. Do you?
It's February 18.
February 18.
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. So if you're, you're interested in the relationship between your city and the Confederate tribe, the Tribes of the Grand Ron, please, please join us. Now, Dana Buckdevine, followed by, boy, Jeanne Counts? Dana?
That's it. Great. Dana Buckdevine, 401 Center Street, Ward 1. I represent over 70 businesses and the property owners of Salem Center. I'd like to thank the council for the due diligence that they've done to date in trying to deal with our homeless crisis. I understand there's a long and challenging path to follow to be able to solve this problem in the long term. In the short term, we have a crisis in retail. Since we have lots of folks who are residing on the sidewalks in the vicinity of the shopping center, as well as Rite Aid, and I'm sure there's a number of other areas in downtown that I haven't mentioned and that I'm not aware of. I constantly hear from our customers, my retailers, and the national credit tenants about the challenges that they've seen with the folks on the sidewalks. I strongly urge you to continue to pursue your efforts with finding alternative shelters, such as the zoning considerations for short-term shelters. I know it's certainly a challenge. As a property representative, I would find it challenging to find and do at least such as you're looking to do. The, appreciate the police. Captain Moore's team are wonderful, they're great support, and I feel that their hands are tied. Bringing my point to the fact that I do not think that we should leave the sitlight ordinance sitting dormant any longer. The folks can certainly stay underneath the shelters until, underneath the audience after business hours, which are killing retail business downtown. We need your support, and I hope you act on it in the near term.
Thank you, Dana. Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Dana. I, I think I mentioned last time, or asked last time, you've been the manager there for 15 years.
Yes, sir.
You know what could help, I think, really get your point across, because we hear different things from different people who are looking at the exact same thing? Is we could get some statistics, some financial statistics. All businesses do tax returns. The owner of the, of the downtown center keeps track of rents. If, if it's possible to put some statistics, deteriorating sales, loss by theft. But, but rather than just come and, and speak, if there could be some statistics that show, yes, indeed, the downtown businesses are being affected by the situation, that would really help.
Certainly, I could, I'll provide those to the council with respect to the shopping center.
Thank you. Counselor Kaser.
Thank you, and thank you, Dana. I kind of have a similar question to Counselor Lewis, and that is, could you describe how many retailers within Salem Center have talked with you either about that they will be leaving within the next six months, or will not be renewing their leases, or have left?
Or challenging to leave.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, because I get, I get emails from retailers, and I have specifically one in mind whose lease is up in about a year. And I'm just curious if anyone has actually said, "I am not renewing my lease."
There are a number of retailers, at this particular point, I can name you five or six, that are challenging the length of term that they may renew for, or whether they renew at all, mostly as articulating concerns both from their staff and from their corporate folks regarding the impact of, of the individuals on the sidewalks. Granted, that's a relatively recent thing, and as we, while the Rite Aid block has been challenged on and off again for a number of years, the folks on Center Street specifically and on High Street are relatively recent since the middle of December. Unfortunately, the fourth quarter is probably the most telling quarter for retailers, and a number of them, again, as I indicated, are indicating either, gee, I'd just like to terminate the lease, I would like to do renewals that are much shorter than what we'd like to do, or we want to negotiate rent structures that are totally different from where they are today, for a variety of reasons, including decreasing sales, or customers who are indicating they don't plan to come back as long as they don't feel safe. Despite the, the good actions of our police department, perceptions are perceptions, and they turn into people's realities.
I've got just one more follow-up. Of those five or six retailers you've, you have alluded to, are those, could you categorize them as small, medium, or large?
I'd categorize them as both national retailers, as well as local retailers, regional retailers.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Jeanne Counts? I, I'm not sure I'm saying this right, so. And Joan Stembridge. And Daniel Roslin will be after that.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Collins. I'm living in Ward 2. And Joan Stembridge and I recently completed a research project on best practices in addressing homelessness, and you all have a copy of that report. A major component of that report was the Oregon statewide shelter study, and I just want to give you a very brief overview of that, because it's a really important part. The purpose of that report was to better understand how to strengthen shelter policies and services, including, included addressing the needs for shelter and services, studying the associated costs and services, and, most important, describing best practices. First of all, they gave steps in developing the emergency shelter system. The first step is a low-barrier 24-hour navigation center that includes intensive case management, and they made a point that that was particularly important for Salem. The second step is developing adequate permanent emergency shelters, and the third is expanding the warming, warming shelter program. Success in creating new shelter beds requires several things. First of all, appropriate location, it's got to be near transportation and services, sufficient funds not only for creating it, but also for operating it. And thirdly, sufficient supportive community and political support. It's important to note that the study makes no reference to camping or living in cars as even a temporary solution. The study considers car or tent camping to represent a total lack of shelter. Best practices in emergency shelter includes, among other things, housing-first and immediate low-barrier shelter. There are some other things listed in there. And best practices must include state interagency council on homelessness. Backing up for a moment, the best practices in long-term solutions includes a number of elements. The key, I think, are, again, housing-first and immediate access to low-barrier shelters. So the, the best practices must include state interagency council on homelessness. The purpose of this council is to assess needs, coordinate resources, and promote best practices as needed in that particular area. And they said that unless such an interagency council is formed and functioning, the problem of homelessness can't be adequately addressed. So their conclusions were, first of all, homelessness is of catastrophic proportions. Oregon's homeless rate is the third worst in the nation. Expanding emergency shelter is only the beginning, and addressing homelessness through, must be done through thoroughly researched and carefully thought-out solutions.
Thank you, Jeanne. Tom?
Thank you very much, Jeannie, for coming down. And thank you also, you and Joan, for this excellent study that I know not only do the councils have it, but, excuse me, state legislatures, county commissioners on both sides of the river, and various other people who are active or should be active in this. I'm kind of curious about the recommendation of the statewide shelter study that car and tent camping are not recommended because they're the equivalent, basically, of being no shelter. Could you? Could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, um, this is something that we saw throughout sources. Um, the, um, the definition of, uh, unsheltered is, um, either being, having no shelter or, um, being in, uh, a place where it's not intended for human habitation. So, um, that means both cars and tents, they're not intended for permanent human habitation.
Jeannie, I want to second Councillor Anderson's comments. The work both you and Joan, we'll hear from Joan here in a second, is just tremendous. I, I recommend it to anyone. I, I know the council has all received copies. I, I hope at some point you can get that all published up for the public to get a look at too. It's just an enormous piece of work. So, and I know you're typesetting now.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Yes?
Um, I, I wanted to, uh, thank you for all the work that you've done and went through what you provided the city council, and, you know, it continues to make sense. The more we hear about the issue, the more clear the, the course of action should be. Uh, I wanted to bring up one thing, and that is, the state legislature, there's talk, uh, out of the, um, Speaker's office that there will be an attempt this year to generate funds, um, through the state, uh, to help the situation. I'm hoping that you're both planning on being there to give your experience and testimony.
Yes, and we've, um, we have delivered or are delivering, um, our report to the Speaker of the House, and...
And I have one question, and this is for both, so you can take your turns. I agree, um, whether it's sitting on the sidewalk without shelter or sitting in a tent or in a car, those are not, those are not appropriate options. But as a practical matter, that's where we are. So my question is, and I'm hoping to get a yes or no, um, do you think it's better to have people sitting on the sidewalks in downtown Salem unprotected? Or would it be better to have them at least be able to be in tents in a designated area? Which would be best for the folks that are now sitting downtown?
Um, based on what we saw in the research, I think, um, people need to have shelter. With that said, um, setting up something like a tent camp is not, um, it's not a quick solution. It, it can't be done in a week or two. It's a long process. Among other things, you have to get it past the, uh, the neighbors, and that's a real challenge. It takes a long time.
Yeah, my, and, uh, again, my question is, just theoretically, which situation is best?
In my personal opinion?
Uh-huh.
My personal opinion is that people need to have whatever kind of shelter they can have.
As opposed to none?
As opposed to none.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Stembridge?
Good evening. My name is Joan Stembridge, and my husband and I live in Ward 1, Ward 2, sorry. Experts who provide services to those who are experiencing homelessness agree with the government staff who produce numerous reports covering the crisis of homelessness. And tents and cars are not considered adequate shelter for human beings. Rather than focus precious resources, staff energy, community interest, and goodwill, creating tent camps and car camps, I urge the city council instead to focus your efforts on recommendations from two fairly recent local programs. First, the Salem Downtown Homeless Solutions Task Force offered recommendations. If enacted, these would do much to alleviate the friction between the downtown business community and those living unsheltered on the city streets. Number one, provide public toilets in the downtown core available 24/7 with associated trash receptacles. Two, provide a hygiene center complete with showers and laundry services for the downtown area available seven days a week. Three, provide storage facilities for belongings to be stored safely during the daytime hours. Four, expand options for downtown cleaning services to be sure the downtown core is kept welcoming for everyone. Investing in these four recommendations would be money well spent. Secondly, the Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Coordinator recommended the following, identifying, as you heard, more landlords who will work with the HRAP program. Number two, work collaboratively with the city, county, state, and federal government to expand affordable housing stock. Right now, we know that we are underbid, underbuilt by more than 155,000 units. And that was in 2015. We don't even know how many were underbuilt now. Expand our emergency shelter beds with 24-hour support. This is from that homeless initiative coordinator. And I would add, completing the sobering center so that it's funded and operational. That would be very, very helpful. In summary, I encourage the city council to focus on long-term solutions recommended by the experts. I encourage the city council to work in close collaboration with all levels of government. Salem cannot solve this alone. I encourage you to respect each neighborhood where you hope to develop any program providing services for those who are experiencing homelessness. In order to get neighborhood by him, it will require many months of meetings to address neighborhood concerns.
Thank you Joan.
And come up. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, councillor?
Thank you. Thank you Joan for, uh, your testimony and that information. I'm, I would just, I'm just curious, would like to know, um, I think it's, it's, um, it's always helpful to hear the recommendations coming from our, our community members. What I don't always hear is how we pay for them. Um, and I'm sure you've thought somewhat about that, uh, because I'm, I'm sure you're aware also that we have challenges with funding our basic services here. Could you describe kind of your thoughts on where funding for the eight or so recommendations you've just described would come from?
Well, I would consider looking at the collaboration with the state that needs to happen, and encouraging them to say that we have a crisis that is statewide, and encourage them to form their interagency council on homelessness so that all the streams that are attached to various types of homeless folks will get collected together and distributed properly. That is not currently happening.
So you're really proposing a statewide led by the legislator, or the legis, the legislative sta, or, sorry, legislators to convene essentially a, a board or a commission or something like that? That's, that's what I'm hearing you say?
Not so much a commission and a board, but connecting the agencies that are in silos now that are not coordinating.
Mm-hmm.
So that they work together and get the streams of money that's available in their silos to connect to those who are homeless.
So streams of money from state agencies?
And the federal...
In local governments?
And the federal government. Then we have got to have the state talk to the federal government because that's where HUD money comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your work on this, Ms. Stembridge. I really appreciate it. I share a lot of your thoughts. We often try to balance the different, you know, the various competing interests, whether we're trying to manage homelessness or end homelessness, because those are two very different things, but, which I would consider tents and, and car camping in the managing, not the ending homelessness. So, we have to balance those things sometimes, and we're trying to decide as a council, where do we put our priorities? Do we put it in the short term? And I think in our current situation, you know, we have a sort of humanitarian crisis where we need to put some more energy into managing homelessness and, but we certainly need to put the majority of our efforts into ending it. And I think, as you heard earlier during our Housing Authority meeting, we've done a lot of that. We need to do more, and I agree with you about the collaboration. I'm, uh, I also agree with you about a lot of the, all of the downtown homelessness, uh, Solutions Task Force was very frustrated when we had two partners lined up to help us fund the sobering center. We also had our money committed, and our two partners pulled their funding before we were able to get it finished. So, that's a frustration. So collaboration is great, but sometimes it doesn't always work out in the end, so. But thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Councillor Anderson?
Same thanks to you as I gave to Jeannie, and I, this is something directed toward the staff, and I'm looking at Director Rutherford. I know at some point back you gave us kind of an update on the, the plans from the Downtown Homelessness Task Force led ably by Councillor Kaser. I think maybe, I don't really need one now, but I would like to see some sort of email with some sort of update, and I'm especially kind of curious, um, that at one point we were ready to commit $213,000 to the duration warming centers at the churches, and that never happened. So, there's $213,000 out there that we were ready to spend on a, sort of a short-term solution, and some of these items, 1, 2, 3, 4, particularly the, uh, public toilets 24/7, maybe we could direct some money that way? And, and if you can answer now, great. If not, uh, some sort of email to the council later would be helpful.
Yes, I can happily address those very quickly right now. So Kristin Rutherford, City's Urban Development Director. Those recommendations are all in progress, and those are largely through investments that we are making through our federal programs, funding and urban renewal in the Arches renovations, which is adding the hygiene center, the showers. We will be adding storage on that site. It's just taking much longer to implement, um, with their contractor and some other considerations tied to environmental reviews and historic issues than we had anticipated. And in terms of the restrooms, um, we're working through our partnership with them once this work is completed to expand their hours of service. In terms of other restroom options, you know, we've previously looked at porta-potties throughout the downtown. There are another, a number of reasons in terms of vendor supply and behaviors within the porta-potties that they are not a viable option. Um, and we have also explored permanent solutions, but the recommendations that we've received from service providers is that we only provide 24/7 if it can be staffed and managed, which is why we're looking at, at added capacity at Arches.
Uh, yeah, two follow-up questions. Well, I guess three. Um, the third one, I'll go backwards, is the Portland Lou. I wonder if, uh, if you can comment now? If not, if you could give us a report on that. Second issue is, um, and, is the chief still here? Yes. I mean, we got our new police station, or will have at some point, and I know there are some sort of public restrooms there, and I think appropriately so. You can't get to them from outside. If you want to get to them, you will have to go through some, um, screening at the, at the front desk of the police. So that's just another thing to consider. And the first question is, do you have any idea of the timeline as to when these, um, recommendations are in progress, when they will be, come to fruition?
So the latest information we have on the improvements at Arches is that those improvements should be complete by the end of February, if not sooner. I'm going to hedge that because we also thought that these improvements would be completed by the end of September. So, there have been a number of construction delays. Um, regarding, uh, restrooms at the police station, that's also something that we have discussed at the staff level in making, um, some enhanced service available there once that's up and running, but we're still, you know, many months away from that being available. With regard to the Portland Lou, staff has done research into that, and that is something that we would have capacity through urban renewal funding to build and install. We do not have funding streams available at this time for the operations and maintenance. Those facilities are quite expensive to construct. We would also have locational issues with where it would go within the downtown, and also questions about what impact it would really have if to have one or two downtown. So, again, that's something that we could continue to explore, but because of the recommendations to have managed facilities, that's why we put resources into the enhanced capacity through our service providers first.
That's very good, and I appreciate that. I guess I have, um, the, I, I would be interested in your staff's analysis of whether the Portland Lou would be helpful or not. And then, I think I heard you say that there is urban renewal funds, there are urban renewal funds to build it because it's a capital project, and I understand as there's the rest of the council, I don't know if the public does, but you cannot use urban renewal funds for operation of, of a, of a, a Portland Lou or anything else. So, uh, the problem, again, comes down to funding. We could build it, but we might not be able to staff it, is what you're really telling me.
That's correct. Yes, staffing would be a challenge, and it's the same challenge with expanding clean team services. That was another one of the recommendations. The clean team program is funded through the downtown parking tax. That parking tax has a cap on it that does not keep up with inflation, and we don't have the capacity within that fund during, under the current revenue model to fund additional cleaning services.
Thank you. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Rutherford, when we spoke three or so weeks ago, and I, I hadn't told you that I intended to bring a, a proposal to the Urban Renewal Agency about the Portland Lou's to build one, I didn't recall you talking about ongoing costs. I, I'm not sure what kind of staffing there is. Anytime I've been to a Portland Lou, there's nobody attending.
I'm just going to ask, if we could save this for a staff report where she can come back with these issues, I, I think we're, I, I don't know if Joan has an answer, but Joan, do you want to? But I think that's who we're talking to right now. I, I really appreciate it, and let her, let her come back with a report, and we'll all be on the same page. Daniel, you're up. John Trelstead? You're, you're behind Daniel here. Right behind you's going to be Sandra Morgan. You're on.
Hi, I'm Daniel Roslin from Ward 2. I think it's important for us to consider the history of how we got to where we are now. First of all, the result of the sweep of rural, mostly out-of-sight homeless tent camps last fall led to people bringing their tents and belongings downtown, becoming very visible, and many housed people and business owners raised an uproar. The city's solution was to ban homeless tent camping. Now, unsheltered people are sitting on downtown sidewalks with all their belongings, including trash, creating an unsightly scene. Even, but, even Rite Aid's overhang may not protect unsheltered people from a driving rain. Homeless folks with a will to survive erect their tents anyway, risking a criminal record and/or choosing hidden unsafe camping locations. And I think it's important to say that despite what your staff report implies, not all unsheltered people are druggies, criminals, or insane. I want to say something about hypothermia. Most of us know that this condition can be fatal. The Mayo Clinic says that one of the leading causes of hypothermia is, quote, "being unable to get out of wet clothes or move to a warm, dry location." This winter, I frequently volunteered at the duration warming center at Church of the Park. When people showed up soaked and asking for dry clothes, this made me wonder about all the wet people who couldn't get into Church of the Park with its 30-person limitation. You understand the effects that evolved from these decisions. Last week, you declared a housing state of emergency. This is a step in the right direction. It offers emergency shelter beds to a few more women to safe sleep. It decriminalizes homeless car camping, though this requires that enough private landowners make spaces available for cars. Let's be clear, car camping is not a solution to homelessness. It is not even mentioned as one of the best practices in the report you now have. Several years ago, when I was volunteering at one of our warming centers, a hypothermic, almost comatose, older woman was brought in to the church from one of those car camps. I think she survived. I know that we're all working to find good, long-term homeless solutions to this crisis. For the short, short term, I urge you to listen to our expert on the topic, Jimmy Jones, when he asks you to reverse the camping ban. Please do not let an unsheltered person's death by hypothermia occur on your watch. For now, allow our unsheltered, unsheltered neighbors the chance to survive as they had been doing. Let's turn back the clock to last summer. And please do not waste time and especially money creating campsites for cars and tents as they only benefit a few people. They are only temporary fixes, are expensive. Instead, invest in long-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, John Trelstead?
I must be a little long.
Why? No, you can... No, you can, you're right. Okay, that is later. Yeah, we'll get you on the right sheet. Thank you. Sandra Morgan. Becky Beeman, you're after Sandra.
So I heard a lot about homeless tonight, and that's not why I'm here.
That's okay. Can you, if you'll introduce yourself.
My name's Sandra Morgan, I live at 1515 Boone Road.
Ah, okay.
The city wants to put a sidewalk in front of my home, and they want me to pay for it, and I want to know why.
That's a good question. Let's ask Mr. Anderson.
Sure, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. That property has a deferral agreement on it. It's in the staff report, I don't recall when the deferral agreement was entered into. There are now sidewalks either already built or on their way, so this will be the last gap. It is council's option to call deferral agreements, and so the staff has prepared the staff report and notified the property owner that it is before the council tonight to call that deferral agreement.
Okay.
So the deferral agreement was signed in 1983?
Yeah.
I didn't buy my home till 1987.
Okay.
So that deferral agreement has nothing to do with me?
Is it linked to the property?
Yes, those deferral agreements run with the land, so it would have shown up in a title report.
Okay, and that's on the agenda tonight on 3.3A? Okay. Thank you. We will take a look at that, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it. You're objecting, I assume you're objecting.
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure. It's nice to have that sidewalk, though, right?
Actually, I'd rather not have it.
Okay.
All right, we're done?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Sandra. Becky Beeman.
Hi, Becky Beeman, I live in Ward Seven. I've been hanging out with you guys for quite a while, I feel like I'm one of the gang. I also want to hearken back to what Jimmy Jones said. As you declared this emergency, as we looked at this, we kicked people out of their tents in the middle of December. It's now been almost 45 days that we have forced them to huddle under the overhangs of our stores, where we hate having them, where we don't want them, where they create unhygienic situations that we have to pay to clean up. And lifting the camping ban and allowing them to move to a place that is less impactful on the businesses appears to be a reasonable approach. Jimmy Jones emphasized two things, low barrier and now. He didn't suggest waiting, and I will point out that winter's not over in March, it doesn't get warm, so when we keep thinking, oh, yeah, end of March, we can get rid of all this stuff, people still need tents after March. If you think of our unhoused population as the, the car campers are up here, they're pretty well off. And down here at the bottom are the people with multiple mental diagnoses, these are the ones your HRAP folks are addressing. These people in the middle, are they better off for what we've been doing, or are they worse off? I would posit that they are worse off. We cleared them out of camps, brought them into town, we took away their tents, and now we want to kick them out, maybe bring back the sit-lie law. When I read this staff report, it pissed me off, largely because it says, "We shouldn't do this because it doesn't connect them with resources." This is not about connecting them with resources. This is about keeping them alive. This is about keeping them healthier. We are treating our unhoused neighbors worse than we would treat stray dogs, and I am bothered by that. I really hope that you will actually do something that allows these people to have more comfort and more health, rather than simply focusing on how it looks downtown. We turned down 37 beds, because it's not going to improve what happens downtown. It's an interesting approach, but it, it's not helpful for the people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time and for your testimony. One of the questions that I have for you is, what would you say to those who say that if you have a designated camping area, you have an area that might create predatory circumstances? It might create a venue for drug dealing or sex trafficking, and how would you respond to those critiques of having a set-aside area for camping, especially if it is not actively managed or supervised or monitored by security? Because I, I think that's a concern, and I know that you work with a lot of homeless individuals, and I'd love to hear what your thoughts are on that.
I think you're going to have a problem if you designate an area. It's going to have a much higher population, and it'll be much more likely to have problems. If you allow three tents on a block, then you have to worry about many more porta-potties, but you're going to have less of a problem in terms of a congregation of the criminal element. When the people were camping off in the bushes at Cascade Gateway Park, they weren't horribly well off. It was an opportunity for a lot of predation, but were they better off than they are now, huddling under Rite Aid? I would say they might very well be. I think it's a problem. If you're going to designate a small area, you're going to have to manage it. If you're going to lift it, except in the downtown core, I think you can dilute it a bit more. You're going to have to get serious downstream about a larger segment of the population. But right now, I would say, stop killing them. I think that would be a good step.
Counselor Anderson, did you?
I did, thanks. I had one, and I'll, and I'll ask it again, I guess. You just said, lift the camping ban except in downtown. What would your response be to lifting the camping ban downtown and also in city parks that are actually city parks as opposed to, you know, other property that is not designated as a park?
I think that's a great idea, and I think Jimmy Jones is the right person to ask that question of.
Okay, and it seems to me you're, one of your basic points is, even if people who were camping in tents, as that is defined, were scattered throughout the city, not in parks, not in the downtown area, but on sort of the fringes and where they can find to go without being, I don't know, just say, with being as safe as they can in those situations, that's a better situation than a pure camping ban.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that you're saying, I, especially the comment that comes from Mr. Jones, that what we really need is low-barrier shelters, that's the spot we're at now, but we also need to deal with today. The one thing that I'll push back a little bit on is the sense that the city made the decision to drive people out of their camping spots. You know, I guess we did, because we started the HRAP program, and that was one of the places that we went to, to find people that had been homeless for decades, and we've been successful with that. That left that camp, especially the one at Wells Marine Park, unattended by people who had been there for decades and kept it under control. So it became a very, very dangerous situation, both health-wise and violence-wise. That's why the city removed those tent camps, not because we chose to just roust them out.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Natalie Janney. Followed by Kate Mentram.
Wasn't prepared, I was waiting to be on deck.
Sorry.
My name's Natalie Janney, I'm with Multitech Engineering, our office is at 1155 13th Street, Southeast. I just wanted to speak, because I saw, we saw the deferral agreement come up for, that Ms. Morgan was talking, Ms. Morgan? Yeah. For Boone Road. We are doing the two projects located to the west that are kind of prompting, they're bringing that sidewalk in that will connect to her property and leave just that one spot along her property without sidewalk. Just wanted to let council to know that we are willing to assist in the process to possibly get the sidewalk built without having to do the deferral agreement. That might help make the costs a little bit less for that property owner. I'm not saying that we may not also need the deferral agreement, because that would, a couple of things, it implies that it's just the sidewalk. I'm not sure if it's just the sidewalk, or if it's the street improvement, and Glenn Davis isn't here to ask. And then, it would also require a willing participant from the property owner, which I'm not sure if that's going to be the case, because there are some challenges, there's some shrubbery that she has that's in the right-of-way that will need to be removed, and there's some trees, so. Anyway, just want to let council know that we are willing to assist in the process to hopefully make that smoother and maybe less expensive for the property owner.
All right, thank you. Counsel, or Peter, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, I really appreciate Natalie being here. What the subdivision next door that are, that is doing, that is developing and causing this staff to recommend calling up the deferral agreement, has to build the sidewalk and the street improvements on there, so there's an opportunity to, to do the improvement either at no cost or at very low cost to the property owner, and that's why Natalie says, hey, you know, we can stand up and do this, so I really appreciate them as the engineers on the project to do that. My recommendation would be that council call the deferral agreement, so that then the property owner is compelled to work with them, barring a failure with them, certainly with staff, to get this sidewalk improvement done. If, if it is not called, we really run the risk of having a 100-foot gap in sidewalk improvements on Boone Road, which is all that would be left to do, so that's why, that's why staff is bringing it up at this point. And we wanted to call it earlier, we wanted to bring it to council earlier rather than later, because when everything is done, and then we'd come up, then the property owner would really be in a bind and not be able to partner with, with the nearby developers. So that's, that's the reasoning.
So, Peter, I just want to understand, then, the staff recommendation is the call you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, to basically compel the property owner to do the, to complete the sidewalk improvements. The standard is 180 days to do it, so there's certainly plenty of time to, to, you know, work with the property owner to find the most efficient, most inexpensive way to, to do it. I believe that the curb is in, so it's really the sidewalk, but there is some shrubbery, and there is some, some landscaping in the right-of-way that, that would need to be removed.
Okay, great, thank you. Kate Mentram. Okay. Marlene Madison. Okay. Pamela Lyons Nelson.
Good evening, council, I'm Pamela Lyons Nelson from Ward One, and once again, I'm bringing actual homeless voices to you, because they don't come, they don't come here. What I want to talk about tonight is something that I heard earlier about the matter of choice. I choose to live outside, I choose not to go into shelters, I choose these things. That is a very black-and-white statement, unless you ask another question. What are you choosing between? What are you choosing between if you're choosing to be outside rather than in a shelter? What does that mean? And what it almost always means, which I wanted to bring to council tonight, is that in the shelters, no, I want to do it the other way around, outside, people, and this is about five people in the past week, where I've asked this question. It's been a situation that they don't talk much about. I don't want to go to a shelter, I don't want to be close to the shelter, because there are people maybe that remind me of the person who raped me, or who beat me. People feel safer outside for very good reasons, that they will probably never speak to you about unless you specifically ask, and I would suggest you just make that assumption, because to ask someone about their trauma, excuse me, I've got a little, something going on with my voice now, if you ask someone about their trauma, and you're just walking up to them saying, "Excuse me, you said you wanted to, you'd rather sleep outside than in a shelter, what's that about?", that's an incredible violation, and it really needs not to be done. It's much safer to assume that that person has good, significant, trauma-based. It won't always be true, far and away the most time. In my conversations, not only with people who have worked with homeless, but also with homeless themselves, it's far and away the case. So when we hear someone say they are choosing not to get services, they are choosing not to sleep in a shelter, we have to take into consideration that there is a whole history there that we don't know, and we really probably have no business knowing. So I want to, I want to change the topic for my few seconds left. Wednesday, we have a chance to interact with people who are homeless, it's the PIT count, annual point-in-time count, and we need volunteers, and that's where you get to hear the story.
Thanks, Pamela. When is it, and where is it, and if people want to get involved, where do they go?
Call Arches.
Okay.
Because there will be, there will be, I think, what, five different areas that are covered?
Uh-huh.
And most of the teams will be out from 8:00 AM till noon.
Which day, again?
And you never go out by yourself, you go out in teams.
Which, which day?
In two days.
This coming Wednesday, two days?
Yes, in two days.
Very good.
What is that, the 29th?
Yeah.
The 29th, yeah, the 29th.
Okay. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you for your testimony, and a quick comment along those lines. When I toured the Safe Sleep Shelter, one of the comments that I, that I heard is, first of all, I wondered, why do we have women-only shelters?
Yes.
And the reality is that up to 49% of our homeless are women, and the vast majority of those women have had extremely traumatic domestic violence, sex trafficking, or other incidents in their past. There's a great deal of discussion of the fact that trauma is a powerful motivator for those who find themselves on the streets, and it takes many forms, but when you talk about folks who don't want to be in shelters, a lot of it is because they were traumatized in a shelter, man, woman, or child. And I'm hopeful to learn, what I appreciate about this testimony is particularly when I get to hear about different segments of our homeless population, because as Jimmy Jones has said, as many have said, our homeless consist of several populations within one.
That's right, that's right.
And so, I intend on touring our youth shelter later this week, and I would love to hear from those who advocate specifically for our youth homeless, because as I understand it, we have 1,100 young people who are homeless, including many who are unsheltered, and so that's a whole other conversation that we haven't even addressed here, specifically about the number of teenagers who are a part of our homeless community. So thank you, I know that what you're doing is helping, again, educate us on the fact that the homeless brain and those who inhabit this environment is a completely night-and-day experience from, from what many of us have experienced growing up, so thank you.
You're welcome, and I'd like to recommend again Steve Goins' presentation on the homeless brain.
Paul Tolman.
Wait, wait.
Oops, I'm sorry, Counselor.
One, one question, just to help me out. I agree, I think I agree with you, that there are people who, who can't really accept services for whatever reason, many different reasons. And my concern is that I get the sense you're advocating that for those folks, maybe the streets of downtown is the place for them.
You would think that's what I'm saying, because I know that's what it sounds like sometimes, and that is, that may be historically true. I think when we talk about services that are shelters that provided and wraparound services, we have to remember those two have to go together. People don't heal from trauma on their own. Trauma is when something so bad happens that you cannot save your bad happens that you cannot save your own life. Think of being tossed from a motor vehicle and having gashes and head injuries. You cannot save yourself in that situation. Other people have to be around you, and it's a long hospitalization almost always. Think of that in terms of mental health. We have to have those services, because healing from trauma is, is a long process, and it involves many aspects. So when we think about that, and I'm not talking just about the people who are, I'm talking, okay, once again, I'm going to flip where I start on that one. The criminal element that we talk about, the addicts who sometimes go into selling to support themselves, and the mentally ill, have, have one thing that I have found in common, and I'm not alone in this, that if you scratch the surface, you find a trauma history. And with people, and with many people, this is a TBI, a traumatic brain injury, along with the emotional trauma. Neither one of those kinds of trauma are easy or quick to heal, and they take a lot of expertise to begin to get people to get used to living with other people.
Thank you. Thank you, Pamela.
I agree. Okay.
Yeah. This could go on for quite a while, talking trauma. Yeah, thank you, Pamela.
This is my field. I could really get into it.
I know, I know. And really appreciate it. If you have any further questions, Pamela really is an expert in trauma-related care. Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Right.
Oh, sorry. I got my sheet over here. Come on down. Paul?
Yep.
Okay.
Paul Tolman, Ward One. I'm a displaced American citizen on the 100 block of High Street. Thank you very much, counsel, Mr. Mayor, for at least allowing us nine more beds. That's better than zero beds. And I want to say thank you once again. I'm still here. I made it through the week, and I'm going to come back, and I'm going to keep coming back. And I hope to be a part of this whole organization to make our lives a little better, whether you're off or on the grid, it doesn't matter. I'm an American citizen, born and raised Salem, Oregon, since 1963 of March, and I'm not giving up on myself, and I'm not giving up on you guys. So help, 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 help. I need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Kizer.
Thank you. The consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the minutes of the January 13, 2020 draft city council minutes, item 3.2A, which would adopt a resolution 2020-S2 transferring $63,160 of appropriation authority from the General Fund Finance Personal Services to General Fund Information Technology Personal Services to enhance information technology network security. Item 3.2B, which adopts resolution number 2020-S3 transferring $30,000 of appropriation authority from the Parking Fund contingencies to Parking Fund Materials and Services for the purpose of funding additional downtown cleaning services. Item 3.3A, which would require construction of deferred street improvements abouting 1515 Boone Road Southeast. Item 3.3B has been moved to item 5.3, so it's not included. Item 3.3C authorizes the city manager to execute all U.S. Department of Justice Justice Assistance Grant documents to accept the $87,139 award. Item 3.3D, which adopts the order modifying the decision of the planning administrator for tentative phase subdivision and Class II adjustment applications for permit case number SUBADJ19-08 and Urban Growth Preliminary Declaration Modification Case Number UGA17-03MOD1. Item 3.3E, which approves the memorandum of understanding between the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron and the City of Salem, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and any necessary amendments. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Motion passes. Okay, I'm going to open the first public hearing.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing concerning Amendment, Amendment One to the 2019-2020 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by public testimony. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward number, and are limited to three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you again.
My apologies. He was not on the first.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, counsel. I'm Shelley A. Hinger, the federal programs manager in the Urban Development Department. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendment to the 2019-2020 Home Investment Partnership Annual Action Plan. The plan addresses funding goals that the council reviewed last May, and at that time, we informed you that we had some additional resources, and we would be issuing a public process in order for us to get those funds utilized to assist individuals who are low and moderate income. For the public, I want everyone to understand that the, the annual plan is a document that allows, in federal funds, about $700,000 to be used by nonprofit organizations or for-profits in either building new housing and/or providing tenant-based rental assistance and/or security deposit assistance. A public notice announcing the proposed plan modifications was in the Statesman's Journal on December 13, 2019. The report was available at the Salem Library, the Urban Development Department located on Commercial Street in, here in downtown Salem, the City of Salem's website, and at the City of Kaiser Department of Community Development. Kaiser is a member of the Salem Kaiser Home Consortium, and therefore, these funds are eligible in both the cities of Salem and Kaiser. We did receive some public comments, and they, and the responses have been included in the plan. Those comments were taken into consideration. It was, they were from the City of Kaiser, and we just added some additional language to make sure that everyone knew that Kaiser is a partner in us addressing housing for these home resources. Tonight, the projects, project that we're going to be recommending as a staff is to expand our, our housing stock for low and very low-income persons. We only had $193,000, so the way that we're going to expand is by providing tenant-based rental assistance so that persons can get housing for up to 24 months while we continue to look at other ways to provide more permanent housing. So there are lots of prongs going on. We have the families that we're assisting through Arches. CDBG funds went in to make the expansion of the Day Center. This is the next part, which is a stopgap measure, which is 24 months of permanent housing in the private market. And then we're working with developers to do more permanent housing and more housing construction, including our partner, the Salem Housing Authority. Went to the end again. It doesn't want to, it doesn't like going through three slides. Again, we're talking about $193,000 that was unallocated from your 2019-2020 plan. With this $193,000, the staff is recommending that Mid-Wilamette Community Action, through its Arches program, provide rental assistance and security, security deposit assistance for up to 20 additional families. This will be for a, up to a 24-month period. Security deposits right now are averaging two months in advance, and so it could be from $1,100 to $1,500 that a family would have to pay, and then the monthly rental assistance. Arches will be using individuals from their hard-to-house. It's not a duplicate of HRAP, but these resources are similar to how the Housing Authority uses its permanent vouchers to provide rental assistance for families or individuals. Our next step is after council considers tonight's amendment, the planned amendment will go to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review. In addition to that, we will enter into agreements with Arches so that the program can begin by March 1, 2020. We have already completed the environmental review, and we have completed draft contracts. That's why I'm confident in these days for us to be able to get this implemented within the next 30 days. In addition to that, staff will continue to provide monitoring and program evaluation so that we can see, again, best practices in how we're implementing them here in the City of Salem. A report will be coming to council in August of 2021 in regards to these resources, but we will also have a report to council in August of 2020 for other resources that you approved last May. With that, I do thank you.
Excellent. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I could just, I want to just check my understanding of what you just said. So if I understood you correctly, this is $193,000 that hadn't been allocated previously. It's going to help 20 families for the next two years, people who are either homeless or at risk of being homeless currently?
That is correct, sir.
So, and when you said families, that could be any size family?
That is right. It could be one individual. We just use the terms of families because everybody is considered a family, and they determine what that looks like.
Excellent. So, so 20 families for the next two years who are not going to be homeless, who otherwise may have if we hadn't done this?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And is this to cover their deposit, or does it cover deposit and rent?
Both.
Both, okay.
Security deposit and rent, depending on the family's needs.
Okay. Sounds good. Neat. Okay. I don't have anyone from the public signed up.
I got a question.
Come on up and introduce yourself, and... Is there anyone else? Did I hear someone over here? Okay.
I represent to...
What's your name?
Wilma Wood.
Okay, Wilma.
I, my husband and I are both, from May 6 to now, we were trying to find a place. There is three things that's against us. I'm emotional, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure.
My husband has a stent in his leg. The doctor says, do not live, you cannot live outside of a home. Up on top of this, he has a stent in his heart. His heart is healthy because we're Christians, and we pray continuously, and our heavenly Father protects us. But there is only, there's another situation. Everywhere we go, they want three times the amount of our income when we don't have three times the amount.
Sure.
Everyone we go to, everyone we go to says, you have to have at least eight, between $3,000 to $8,000 in your account. We don't have $8,000 in our account. We just get 900, and my husband is going to be dropping, Social Security is going to be dropping his Social Security because he is not eligible for the income because we are homeless, and we're living in our, in our car. We have enough gas to go back and forth three times down to, down to Saniam Freeway corridor, and we sleep there every night. We come back here. We try to, we...
Go ahead.
My, and my husband and I are in a warm vehicle. We are covered with the protection of our vehicle, but we don't get enough income. And everyone says, you have to have this amount of money when we don't have that amount of money.
It's a terrible situation. Could you, Wilma, I'd like to have you talk with Nicole Utz from our staff, and she'll work with you, Nicole, she'll work with you on this. So thank you for coming down and sharing this with us. And this is just the kind of program that is set up to help you. So let us, let us try to work with you and see what we can find out, okay?
Thank you, because we found, we found a duplex for $995.
Sure.
They want, they want four thousand, they want us to have $5,000 in our account when we don't have it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for coming in. We'll try to get this figured out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to testify on this proposal? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of Amendment Number One to the 2019-2020 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan, and direct staff to submit the amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Attachment One.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Open the next public hearing.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at the southeast corner of Kubler Boulevard Southeast and 36th Avenue Southeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood Association is limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony limited to issues raised during the public testimony.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, planner with Community Development Department. So I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case C 733 for territory at the southeast corner of Kubler Boulevard Southeast and 36th Avenue Southeast. I'd like to enter the staff report attachments and presentation into the record. The subject property owned by the petitioner is contiguous to city limits on the north and the east. It's about 1.06 acres and includes 0.33 acres of Boone Road right-of-way. There's a long, narrow tax lot between this property and 36th Avenue that's not part of the annexation territory, and it's owned by the property owner across 36th Avenue Southeast. The property is contiguous to city limits, so annexation is required in order to obtain city services for future development. The annexation territory is designated industrial, as are most of the properties surrounding it. There are a few that are designated industrial, commercial, and commercial to the east, sorry, the west. The property is zoned IG in Marion County, and that's consistent with the Industrial Comprehensive Plan designation, so the territory would automatically be zoned City of Salem, general industrial upon annexation. In this photo, you can see this property is undeveloped at this time, and there are some commercial and industrial developments, as well as some large vacant parcels nearby. And to the west, we have a residential care facility. This annexation would be exempt from voter approval under Senate Bill 1573, as the owner has signed the petition. It's within the urban growth boundary, subject to our comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits, and it may not be referred to the voters, but council has the authority on whether to annex.
Thank you. Mr. Traustad, would you like to testify? Oops, you're not done. I'm sorry.
So we did have comments from the Saniam Water Control District. This property is within the district, and the district requested the property remain in the district. And there's a district lateral that's in an easement on the property. So they wanted to draw that, draw attention to that. City staff recommends that we do leave the property in the district. Other city staff comments are in the staff report. We received no comments from the Neighborhood Association or citizens. And again, the annexation criteria. Staff felt that this property met the criteria, meeting comprehensive plan and state goals. We can provide services, and the annexation would be in the public interest. So we are recommending that council find that petitioners signed a valid petition, determine that annexation satisfies the criteria, adopt the annexation order, apply the City of Salem industrial general zoning... of Salem Industrial General zoning, and withdraw territory from the two fire districts that are affecting the territory. That's Salem Suburban Rule Fire District and also a very small slure to the south in Turner Fire District. And that does conclude my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Traustad, did you want to testify?
I don't know if I need to.
Probably not. Probably not, really.
But you're welcome to.
Yeah. And I don't mean to discourage you, but I don't think you need to. Okay, Counselor Nanki, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question for staff. I have a question for staff.
Okay. Go. Let's let Hoy ask his question of staff.
Can you, Ms. Cole, can you explain the impact of the leaving it in the Saniam Water Protection District? I don't quite understand that. Can you help me with that?
Well, I can give you the reasoning why they want us to leave it in the district. So the property is within their boundaries and has a contract with the district for irrigation water. The property is subject to the rules, regulation, and bylaws of the water district and a component of the delivery system, which is the lateral, Coates lateral. So the water district asked for their approval from the district prior to, from annexation. They said that the city has no stormwater facilities available to serve the property and they stated that they have proof that they're the owner of the Coates lateral. The farm ground and water assessment are critical to the successful operation and maintenance of that district facility. And they were concerned because we weren't showing the district easements on the exhibits, but that's not something we would normally show on an annexation map. But they did commit to working with Public Works to resolve any issues.
So if it develops, are we providing the water or are they, is somebody, is the district providing the water?
They could still get irrigation water from the district, but if they're hooking up to city services for sewer water, then the city would be providing those services.
And the fact that they're still in the district wouldn't be a problem?
We've done it in other situations before.
Okay. Peter, did you want to?
Yeah, the Saniam Water Control District is strictly an irrigation district, so not a, so they provide water strictly for irrigation. We would be the provider of water, potable water and sewer.
Great, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thanks. In regards to the property to the west, across 36th, this will not create an enclave because they're still touching diagonally then?
Go back over here.
Because I know you had mentioned right-of-way, but there'll still be some of Boone Road that's not inside of the city limits of that case, correct?
Right. So there's the little sliver between the green line and 36th Avenue that's still going to be outside the city limits.
I don't see green, but I'm green deficient.
Oh, sorry. So the territory map. And I'll tell Alan next time, don't make it green. So for the property on the other side of 36th, they have city limits surrounding on three sides. However, I don't see an opportunity for us to annex that as an enclave because we have too much right-of-way and the rule is 25% or less. So it's difficult to say that we would ever capture that property across on the west side of 36th.
Okay. And yeah, and I noticed in the drawing, so what I'm looking at, I say it's a yellow line versus the reddish line that has kind of the blocks in it. There is a space there and that's that location that you're talking about because the boundaries don't match each other, the yellow versus the red line.
Right. So there's just this really narrow...
Right.
And what we assume happened is that this used to be one property that crossed and 36th was run through that property. So it probably was originally one piece of land and now it's divided by 36th.
And so the property to the west actually owns the little sliver on the other side of the street?
They did the last time I checked, yes.
I would think someone would want to talk to them and, and we get lots of requests for moving lines around and that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Is this okay? All right. Thank you. Okay, any other closed public hearing? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you. I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say, oh, do you want to talk about it? All, any?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay. An open public hearing on 3.3A. See?
The City Council?
Oops. It looks yellow to me.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning Salem Rebius Code updates to multifamily housing design standards and regulations. SRC 110.085B is the criteria applicable to the proposed amendments. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Eunice Kim. I'm planner with the Community Development Department here tonight to present the staff recommendation for the multifamily housing design code amendment. So this code amendment in this project is really designed to help meet our, our housing needs and it really aims to do that while both reducing barriers to the development of multifamily housing, which I'll explain, but also ensuring compatibility when these types of projects are developed. I just wanted, before I get into the code amendment, I just wanted to clarify that this project is not actually changing where multifamily development is allowed in the city. There is a House bill that was approved during the last legislative session that will require us to allow up to four units in single-family areas, but this is not that project. That will come later. This project is really focused on the design of multifamily projects. So just as a reminder, we conducted a housing needs analysis 2014-15 that looked at what were our needs for housing in the next 20 years by 2035. And that study came back and said we have a projected deficit of land for multifamily housing. We have had some comp plan map changes since that housing needs analysis was completed. So our deficit is in that 207 acres of projected deficit. We're down to about 147. So we've had about 60 acres of land converted to multifamily since then. So we're making progress, but we have, have some work to do. And as, just as a reminder, this code amendment is part of the work plan that followed that housing needs analysis. That work plan really laid out different ways that we could start chipping away at our projected deficit of multifamily housing. We've completed the accessory dwelling units. Number two, the allowing more multifamily and the single-family is again that House bill that we'll be working on later. So we're working on the design review process now. So we kicked off this project more than a year ago. We worked with a consultant team as well as the state DLCD, Department of Land and Conservation and Development on this project. We did outreach in the community through a variety of ways. We had 10 focus groups that included neighborhood associations, planning commissioners, city counselors, developers, affordable housing advocates. And then we'd had some public workshops, we had an online survey, and then we brought our recommendation to the council, to the planning commission in November. So all of the input that we received, kind of through that public outreach, is what's informing the code amendment that I'm presenting tonight. So just to kind of lay the land of what we're doing today and what exists today in terms of regulations, all multifamily development has to go through a design review process. So we define multifamily today as anything more, three or more units. So any project that's three units, up to 300 units or more, all those projects have to meet a long list of design standards that address everything from open space to access to design. And so if a project can't meet just one of those design standards, it's kicked to a public hearing process. So today I'm going to give just a few highlights from the changes that we're proposing. And all these changes are really focused again on helping us meet our housing needs by really creating more flexibility in what the standards are and how you can meet those standards so we can kind of remove some of the existing barriers to development. First, the code amendment is proposing to remove three and four family out of the definition of multifamily. So right now, again, three or more is defined as multifamily, but if we take it out of the definition of multifamily, these three and four unit projects no longer need to go through the laundry list of design standards. It's very difficult right now for three and four unit projects to meet all of our design standards. We often get calls from people who are interested in it and then we tell them all the requirements and a lot of people really just walk away. And so the idea is to kind of remove some of those barriers. We have had some three and four unit projects that have been proposed recently and several of those have been kicked to a public hearing because they couldn't, they couldn't meet just one or two standards, whether that was open space or a setback or offsets. So some of those have come here to council. So instead of having three and four units go through the design review process, we are proposing that we treat them more like single-family. So for example, in terms of development standards, like maximum heights and setbacks, the setbacks that, for example, apply to a single-family would apply to a three and four unit, same as maximum height. So for example, we have like a multifamily two zone. We have a lot of development happening in those. For a single-family home right now, the maximum height is 35. So we're proposing that a three and four family project would have to be only, could only be 35 feet tall as opposed to 50 feet tall. So the idea is to kind of make them more compatible. These projects would have to meet minimal design standards and again, that's really just to address compatibility. So those design standards are having an articulated roof, for example, having entrances facing to the street or common open space. The code amendment also would create a new set of standards, limited standards, for these smaller multifamily projects with five to 12 units. The idea again is to make it more feasible to develop these projects and lower some of those barriers. Some of the examples of the standards that would apply is you would still need to have some open space, 20% of your site would be open space, and you still have to allow pedestrians to be able to move to and through the site. For the larger projects, those with 13 or more units, today we require open space. We require 30% of a site to be dedicated to open space. Every unit has to have private open space, so essentially a balcony or a patio. And then larger projects, those with 20 or more units, have to have a children's play area. We are proposing that 30% still applies, so 30% of your site still needs to be open space, but we're proposing to create flexibility in how that 30% requirement is met. So it could be through private open space or common outdoor open space. Regardless of if you decide to do a bunch of balconies, you would still have to have one big outdoor open space. So there's no way to meet the open space requirement that's proposed by just doing balconies, for example. And larger open space, or larger projects, we would recommend that only big projects with 20 or more units would have to do a percentage of balconies. So today, again, every unit needs to have a balcony or patio, but we are proposing that only 20% would need to have a balcony or, or a patio. And so this creates some flexibility in design while also kind of, we heard from a lot of affordable housing developers that, you know, units without balconies tend to be rent for lowers, so we're trying to also create that flexibility in what these would rent for. Balconies is a major issue that has come up a lot when multifamily is proposed in Salem. And so we hear this in terms of compatibility. When a multifamily project is next to a single-family home, often the concern is that the balconies are overlooking the single-family neighborhoods and backyards. So we're proposing that balconies are not allowed on the side of a building facing a single-family if it's essentially within 50 feet of that single-family zone. So it creates some flexibility. If you want your building to be closer to a single-family, don't have the balconies there. We're not requiring balconies. But if you want to have those balconies, you would need to be pushed back 50 feet. So we're trying to create that flexibility while still addressing compatibility concerns. And then parking is the other change that we're proposing. So today, anything with three units needs two spaces per unit. Anything four plus needs one and a half spaces per unit. So for a three-unit project, that's six spaces. And again, that's very difficult to do on a small, on a small project. So we're proposing that these smaller projects, those with three to 12 units, would only need one space per, per unit. And then 13 plus, we're proposing that the amount of parking is really calibrated to the type of unit. So if you have a studio or a one-bedroom, you'd only need one parking space, but if you have two bedrooms, three bedrooms, more bedrooms, you'd need one and a half. So it's just recognizing that perhaps there would be more cars and demand for cars the bigger the units are. We're also proposing ways to reduce the parking requirements, whether it's through providing affordable housing, onsite like car share, covered bike, bike spaces, and if you're just close, closer to transit. So as I mentioned earlier, right now, if you don't, if you can't meet all of the design standards of 60-plus, even just one, it kicks you to a public hearing. And that adds, we've heard, time costs money, delay, uncertainty to projects. So we're proposing that if you can't meet a standard, you could apply for an adjustment, which is an administrative review. Public, the neighbors, the neighborhood association would still have notice and get notice, still have the opportunity to comment. It could still be appealed and called up by the council, but it wouldn't open up the whole project to a public hearing process. So I recommend that you in Gross Ordinance Bill 120 and advance it to secondary for enactment. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. I want to call up members of the public who've signed up. Is Jeff Schumacher still here? He had to leave, okay. Natalie Janney? Okay, I think she was on, oh, there you are, Natalie, okay.
Good evening again, Mayor Bennett, City Councilors. My name is Natalie Janney. I'm an engineer with Multitec Engineering. As you're probably aware, our firm does a good bit of multifamily design in the Salem area and as such, we've been extremely involved in the process of the review of the design standards. Overall, I would say these changes are fairly benign. I'm not going to get up here and say that they will kill multifamily development because that isn't true. However, I don't believe they'll provide the breadth of flexibility that staff and their consultants believe that they will. And I take issue with one of the proposed changes, well, actually two, of the code and that's mainly the prohibition of balconies when adjacent to an RA and RS zone. This is an issue that I raised at Planning Commission and they agreed to strike it, so I'm a little confused as to why staff is bringing it back again. Having done a great deal of multifamily design in the last decade, we have been to several neighborhood meetings and public hearings and I've heard the same complaints from neighbors that you have regarding compatibility and the idea that, that there's going to be people on their balconies peering down at single-family in the, in the backyards. But this isn't really a fear based on anything. It's just based on this type of belief that for some reason renters are less than homeowners, that they're going to be doing some type of activity that's unsavory and they're going to be spying on their neighbors. I won't list the other negative things that I've heard people say about apartment dwellers because they aren't worth repeating, repeating. But my belief is that by codifying the prohibition of balconies adjacent to single-family zones, just because homeowners have a negative perception of renters and apartment dwellers validates this ignorant opinion. And that's something that I personally just believe that the city needs to be careful of. Because think of it this way, a single-family house is allowed to be three stories, 35 feet tall, setback 20 feet from the property line. An apartment building the same height is setback 35 feet from the property line and is not allowed to have a balcony. So why is it okay for the house to have a balcony, but it's not okay for the apartment? So, here's what this proposed provision does. It causes a larger setback, which developers won't do because it's a waste of expensive land. And frankly, the city shouldn't want that because it's an inefficient use of growth, of urban growth boundary land. We just won't do balconies, which removes the ability of renters to have private open space, also makes the side of the building facing the single-family zone less attractive because the decks help break up the building mass. And it will move, it will move parking to the adjacent, to be adjacent to the single-family zone because you can still put parking there and move the building back 50 feet to the property line while you're using this space. The second thing I'm going to try and bring up really quick is I would really love something extra to be in the code that would limit the appeal and call-ups of multifamily design projects. We've had several projects called up where they're not being called up based on criteria. They're being called up just because, we had one a few months ago that was called up because the neighborhood association didn't feel like they were having enough...
Thanks, thanks Natalie. Well said, yeah. I'm not sure on that one. I'd like to be about 6'5". I, I don't know. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you so much for your time. So I want to ask you a little bit more about the balconies. So as I understand it, the Planning Commission voted to allow balconies, correct?
Yes.
And that was removed from the staff's recommendations, correct?
Yes.
Were you present for the Planning Commission meetings? And if so, can you tell us, did the Planning Commission explain why they were in favor of balconies?
I was. I testified at the Planning Commission hearing. Part of it was the idea that it's silly that you are allowed to have a balcony for a house, but you're not allowed to have one for an apartment. One of the planning commissioners, I'm going to butcher his name, I'm not even going to chant it, Commissioner Kapcho, whatever.
Kapcho.
Kapcho, mentioned that he, his house was on a hill. He had a balcony and he could look down at all of his neighbors and he thought it was just silly that you would limit that for apartments.
And I'm wondering, I think the intention of changing our multifamily housing design, as I read our staff report, is to create more flexibility, and to quote, ease the development of projects, and to address the fact that we need smaller and less expensive housing units, as well as a broader array of housing choices. My question is, how do balconies play into that, one way or the other? Is the thought that if you have the balcony as an option, that might make more areas a more attractive option for a family, a multifamily housing? I'm certainly not an expert in planning design, so I'm wondering if you can assist me.
So part of it is that a lot of the apartments that are being developed lately are market-driven, so they're, it's being based on what is desirable for the market. And currently, that is to have a balcony and private open space. And, you know, it could be eventually that maybe the market shows that balconies wouldn't be necessary, or private open space wouldn't be desirable, but that's just not the case at the moment. And, you know, one of, one of the newest renters that I know of is my mother-in-law, she's a widow, and she just decided she didn't want to have the responsibility of an uptake of, upkeep of a house, and so she wants, you know, the balcony space for her flower boxes. So it's just, I appreciate the idea that we don't have to have balconies, that provides the flexibility in the future should the market change, but the prohibition that we can't have balconies is what I take issue with.
And if I may, I have one follow-up question to that. Another question I have, just looking at the screen up there, I mean, under the design changes, would trees, once they eventually grow to a certain height, would that alleviate the privacy concerns that folks might have?
We have done additional screening for some projects when they're adjacent to single-family. You are required to have screening, landscape screening between multifamily and single-family, and so we have had projects before that were particularly contentious, where we have offered and provided more intense landscape screening, and so that would, that could be an option.
Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take issue with what you said, your characterization of neighborhood associations and neighbors seeing apartment dwellers as less than. That hasn't been my experience, although that certainly could be the case sometimes. I think it's not always wise to generalize like that, so.
Oh, I completely agree. I, I don't like hearing it when I go to, when I go to neighborhood meetings.
What I have heard regarding balconies and developments, and I've been at some of the neighborhood meetings you've been at, is that it basically, the issue is that people have had a single-family home for a long time with nobody behind them, and now they're going to have somebody behind them, and the fact is that you're proposing, and a lot of times, a multifamily, you know, it could, I'm sure they'd have the same objection if you, if you proposed, if somebody proposed a single-family residence as well. I don't think it's, I don't, the fact is that you happen to see that during multifamily, is people are just not happy with the fact that they're going to have neighbors when they thought they were going to have open space next to them. I don't think it's, I don't think it has to do with the fact that it's an apartment or apartment dwellers. We might, we might disagree on that, I get that.
I think my, my experience with what I've heard people say about apartment dwellers, I'm going to have to agree or disagree.
I understand. I live in East Salem, where, you know, it's probably the most densely populated area of the city, with many apartments, so we're more accustomed to them there, so, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Natalie, I'm interested, I know it's not right on point on, on this public hearing, but you were starting to talk about the effect that it has on development when you see continual call-ups, that really, at the end, and we've seen several of those lately, nothing gets changed. It goes through eventually, but there is that time period between when the first decision was made, and the last decision, which was the same as the first. So go ahead and expand on that.
So we, we had, we did a back-of-the-envelope calculation based on increased construction costs, what that does to your financing, what that does to your loan, and we had a project a few months ago, where we figured that one, it was an increased cost for the project of $750,000, which equated to a monthly rent increase of $150 a month. And so, it's just, it's just another, another cost that gets added on to rent. And for that project, it was, we had, we had gone to the neighborhood association, participated in their meeting, answered their questions, they participated in the hearing, and then they still felt like they didn't have enough involvement. So we went back again, and then ultimately, the project was approved the same way that it was before it was called up.
Yeah, I'm actually looking for more specifics. I mean, what, what is the reason that the cost goes up? Is it you just don't like waiting, or costs of materials go up, labor goes up?
Yeah, it's, it's construction materials, and then, you know, you, if you have a large enough project, that's a significant, a 3% increase on a multimillion-dollar project, that's a significant cost, and then that, that gets carried into the financing for the project, there's carrying costs for the land, and just over the life of that loan, it was just the compounding effects of that, of that weight.
Thanks. Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Now I understand our conversation before the city council meeting tonight. I'm curious about your discussion about the call-up and the appeal process, and as I understand it from Eunice's presentation, the city has proposed to make it, it's easier to have the project go through without call-ups, it only has to be adjusted by the staff, and then it can be called up if. So I'm curious as to, what would you like that is even less than what the city has proposed?
I'd like the, I'd like for the appeal to have to be limited to the one adjustment item, not open it up. And it just hasn't been clear, I guess, through the process, that, that the appeal would be on just the one adjustment item, and not the entire, it wouldn't open up the entire project.
Thank you. Now I understand, and Eunice, I hope, Eunice, I hope you will reply to that concern. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for bringing that up as well. And I try to bring that issue up when people call it up, and it's not necessarily a criteria-based decision as well, because it, just for the developers to sit here with attorneys for several hours as we go through other things, before that comes in, and then you have to do presentation to get everything ready in the event, we want to throw something else different at you. Typically, new counselors, because their, their neighborhood associations are encouraging them to call it up, because they have an issue with it, but it's not a criteria-based issue, and so.
Well, and then sometimes, we have no clue why it was called up.
Correct.
So then, in order to prepare for it, you have to prepare for this, you know, that, I mean, that, that happened, the last hearing with Culver and Grandview, that was called up, we had no clue why it was called up, so we were preparing for all manner of, of issues that could be a possibility.
But thanks for continually bringing that up, and for all the developers, and to that end, staff actually had sent out another email today, which is different than what we typically see, saying that, hey, if you have any questions at all, contact staff, we don't necessarily have to pull things up, we can answer questions either through staff or sub-staff, if you want to call it that. The actual planners versus management inside of the apartment.
Counselor Anderson?
I don't know, I don't know how sub-staff compares to attorneys, but they're probably at the same level.
Really close, I think.
One of the neighborhood groups had a concern about bike storage or bike racks in units that were 13 or more, and the requirement now, as I understand it, is you have to provide bike racks, which should be outside the unit, and their suggestion was for units of 13 or more, there might be some requirement for secured bike storage, and I just wonder if you could comment on how that might affect your development of a unit that was 13 or more.
City of Eugene has requirements for bike parking like that. I know that we've done that before, but it's just another, it's just another thing.
Right, another brick in the wall. Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Again, thanks. There's, there's one other item here that was brought forward through the Planning Commission, and was not recommended by staff, and that's the, the parking between a multifamily building and the street on the 5 through 12s. And what was the impetus, and did they change that as it came to them, based on lot geometries, or?
We, I wasn't involved in that discussion, and we don't do projects, very many projects or any of that size, so I don't know that I could speak intelligibly on that.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Leon?
Thank you. I kind of wanted to follow up a little bit on, on the balcony piece. I'm, I'm an apartment renter, and I have a balcony. And I could tell anyone here that there was a time when the apartment management had to do some renovations to certain apartments, and apparently ours was found to be condemned, and so they actually shut, like, made it, they pretty much like blocked off our entry, entry exit to the balcony for about, probably about two weeks, before they were able to actually replace a balcony with new material. And, I mean, during those two weeks, it was so frustrating, because there's a nice window, but I can't open it, because there's a big, huge sign that says, "Don't open, because you're going to fall out." And, I mean, my, my concern would be by, I mean, you were mentioning that the Planning Commission wanted to make, keep the balconies there, and I, what I would like to see in this is to keep the balconies within this update.
I agree.
Thank you.
And the balconies are out under the staff recommendation.
They're out within 50 feet.
50 feet, okay. Okay? Any other questions? Nancy. Nancy McDaniel, from Nen.
Thank you. My, my name is Nancy McDaniel, I live in Ward 1, and I'm here representing the Northeast Neighbors, Neighborhood Association tonight. So we voted to support this ordinance and the code amendments for a number of reasons. One of the things is that it just makes sense, we, to differentiate the design standards based on the size of the unit. I think Nen is a perfect example of a neighborhood that has got a lot of the smaller types of apartment buildings. Several of Eunice's photos are from places in, in Nen. We have the cottage clusters, triplexes, smaller, like, you know, 13-unit developments and so forth. And I think you can see that it really works well, especially with good design. We support reducing the parking minimums, the parking requirements, and we also supported the, this was a topic at some of the workshops or whatever that Eunice held, having more usable open space, because I think the, the design standard now is you have to have open space distributed around the site, but the, the way the stand, the, the design standards are written, you have to have open, a clump of open space that people can actually use. And one thing, I'm going to be touching on a couple of things that were brought up already in questioning. We strongly support the staff recommendation not to allow parking between the street and the building for four to 12 units. We, there's one, it just breaks up a neighborhood, and this is exactly the kind of smaller development that would be infill in a residential neighborhood. There's one, one smaller apartment complex in our neighborhood. It went in, I think when I first became Land use Chair, and I didn't know what I was doing, and it has a parking lot right next to the street, between the building, and every time I walk by that, I just think, I wonder if there's something I could have done about that. It really breaks up the, the look and feel of the, of what is otherwise a residential street. And then, there are a couple of changes we wanted to suggest. One is the, there's open space, you, if you have what's called, I think, active recreation area, that double counts towards your total open space requirement, and it, it's for things that are listed, like a swimming pool, wading pool, sports area, children's play area, but one of the things in there is a picnic area with benches and at least two picnic tables. And while I think I would love to have if, a picnic area in a development, especially if I didn't have a balcony, I'm not sure that that, the picnic benches, or picnic tables represents the same sort of level of commitment or permanence that all the other things listed there do, like a basketball court. So we would like to see that, that dropped out as meeting that double counting. The last thing is the sheltered bike parking. Thank you, Tom, for noticing that. We feel that there should be secured, sheltered bike parking for residents. What's there right now would be bike racks, but if I lived in an apartment complex, I would not want to leave my bike there overnight. And we're talking, again, about 13-plus units, the larger developments. And that is everything I wanted to say. Any questions?
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, I did notice the biking requirements right away. I have a spell, you know, a search that searches out bicycles, and then I find it. With respect to the, your other recommendation about benches and park, picnic tables and stuff being double counted, would inserting the word permanent before those, like, permanent picnic tables and benches, would that make you feel easier about it?
I, I suppose so. I still think that unless, and I don't know anything about developing, but I'm thinking if I were a developer, and unless I'm developing a high-end development, you know, with a swimming pool or something like that, I'd just go for the picnic tables every time. I wouldn't be doing, I wouldn't bother with any of the other types of improvements that are listed under that section.
Thank you, Nancy. Evan Manville?
My name is Evan Manville, I'm in Ward 7. I sent you written testimony on this issue before, it's in your packet, and it's focused on two recommendations. First, you should eliminate costly parking mandates. And second, you shouldn't force people to pay for other people's parking. If the nine of you were roughly representative of the renters in Salem, slightly more than one of you, let's say it's you, Mr. Mayor, doesn't own a car, you don't have a car in your household, 47%, perhaps this side, the four of you, own one car, and 38% own two cars, one, 8% of people own three or more, let's say that's you, Counselor Anderson. The proposal in front of you would require many, if not most, multifamily buildings to require more than one parking space per unit, if they're two, two-plus bedrooms. And that kind of presumes each multifamily building has proportionate numbers of each of you, and there are no Mayor Bennetts. And that's kind of strange. So if we're really interested in getting people into more housing, we've got to stop mandating each and every building has the same amount of parking. And why should we do that? First, parking is really expensive. It takes more than 10% of people's rent, sometimes 14%, depends on, on the model of development. A lot of it's unused, we don't have great data locally, but studies from other cities show 20 to 40% of off-street parking is unused. It's built and it's just overbuilt, on average, you know, some of it's all totally full, and some of it's 60% empty. And that's the third reason, there's a lot of variance in how much parking people want. Some of you don't need any, some of you need a lot, some of you need a little bit. And that's what happens in cities where they take away these mandates, is the market provides, the market responds. In downtown Los Angeles, 1.2 units, in Seattle, .7. So it just, it works. So eliminate it, join Buffalo, New Haven, downtown areas of Portland and Eugene, Cascade Locks, and Springfield, Yakima, and just take them out, let the market do it. And the second thing, unbundle the parking, require developers to lease it separately from the units, so those, Mayor Bennett doesn't have to pay for council. So those, Mayor Bennett doesn't have to pay for Counselor Anderson's parking. And it's a law that five cities have, it works just fine. So those are the things. It's a small ask. I'm just saying that our housing should reflect the diversity of our parking needs and we should let the market provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Manville. So it sounds to me like there are a number of cities out there that are not mandating parking. Is that right?
There are, the two largest cities with zero parking mandates are Buffalo and New Haven, Connecticut. Other cities are moving that direction pretty quickly. Portland is coming up on not having any mandated parking. The downtown areas, as I mentioned, and a lot of other cities, Eugene, Yakima, that sort of place have that.
And I suppose the idea is that we have a shortage of multifamily housing. And doing away with a mandate doesn't mean the developer cannot provide one, one unit per space. It just means that he's no longer required to. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. When I testified, thank you for the question. When I testified on this at the Planning Commission, actually before me, developers said, "The easiest way is to go bankrupt is not to provide enough parking." And I heard afterwards, checking with UNICEF, I said, "Hey, what are you hearing?" And they say, "Oh, they're going to build 1.75 parking." You know, so some people's business models have this in their, in their model, and that's their habit. But I think there are other developers who are going to look and say, "Hey, I've got a lot of friends like Mayor Bennett and I'm going to build something like that." And, and the question for you all is, what's the worst that could happen, really?
Yeah.
You know, what's, what's the worst that could happen is somebody could have a car and they could park it on the street. And is that really that bad? You know, the city of Salem has a system for that. And about 14% probably of the city's land is for parking, about half of it on-street, about half of it off-street. And that's a huge public asset that the city, I think, is under-managing. So if the worst thing is, hey, city, you have to be a little bit responsible and you have to say, "Hey, let's do some more $15-a-year permit districts," that's fine. You know how much it costs to park privately? $720 a year. It's 60 bucks a month if you want to pay for a lot somewhere else. But right in front of your house, it's 15 bucks. So yeah, I, I think there's, if the worst that happens is the city of Salem gets a little bit more thoughtful about how it manages on-street parking in those few places where there's some spillover parking, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's a feature, not a bug.
And I guess my final question, if that's all right. Thank you so much, Mayor. You know, as I understand it, multi-family housing can mean a variety of tenants for a variety of income brackets. So there may be some tenants, the Tom Andersons of the world, who need three different Porsches in their garage. But there, there's an image, right? I can, I can even imagine. But, you know, I also see a lot of senior citizens, folks who are downsizing, who don't want or need a parking spot. And as you have more and more Uber services, as you have close proximity to walkable neighborhood hubs or just public transit, which we will have seven days a week, it strikes me as something that, it seems that parking mandates seem less relevant now, given the way our population is aging and the number of folks who don't have the income to afford multiple cars.
Yeah. And I, I am a planner by profession and I'm kind of embarrassed that we went along with this for how long we did. But best practices for planners and Institute of Transportation engineers, they're all saying, "We, this is, we got to stop doing this." It's bad practice because it's not changing, it's not changing with the times. And we've hidden all these costs for a really long time. And now we, we've got a housing cost problem, we've got a climate change problem. The easiest thing to do is to hide the cost of parking and to bundle it with everything. And, and that's been a problem. And we, as practitioners, have come around to that. We realize that most seniors will live six to 10 years after they lose their driving, their ability to drive. And they, you know, they want to stay in their neighborhood, you know, so they can move to a place that doesn't have a parking space in their neighborhood, like if, if you were allowing it. So yeah, there, there are a lot of reasons to do this, and I don't see a lot of reasons not to, given the data and where it's happened. Seattle saved over 500 million by scaling back theirs. $500 million. We're not Seattle, but we've got a lot of ability to save here.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Evan. Question, Norman. I just want to know how pressing it is that this move along tonight. Is there any timeframe here?
There's no immediate timeframe, no. It just needs a little more time for council to consider. It's certainly available.
Well, there's certainly been a lot of material given to us tonight, a lot of ideas I'd kind of hate to go through with amendments on the fly. Maybe give us time to kind of draft up any ideas each of us have. Counselor Hoy, I would suggest, and, and do folks have questions for UNICEF? I don't want to.
We have other people testifying still, I think, Mr. Mayor.
Did you miss this? Okay, come on down then.
Thank you for allowing this. Dan Dorn, P.O. Box 3577, Salem, Oregon. Testifying tonight is a citizen, as a home builder, and as a past member of the Salem Planning Commission. First, I'd like to say that I greatly applaud your efforts to modify multifamily housing code. On November 19th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and took testimony. And they, they accepted the testimony, the changes that were addressed that evening, and they adopted those changes unanimously. Now, tonight, we have a little different document in front of us. And while I'm supportive for the, most of the proposed changes in the design standards, I have three issues with staff recommendations. The first, disregarding Planning Commission's recommendation, staff continues to propose off-street parking for the units that are between five and 12 multifamily units. The concern here is that five to 12 units most likely is going to be an infill project. And having to adopt to a certain standard that the parking is here and can't be there might preclude that project from moving forward at all. So we, we'd like to have that taken out and back to what the, what the Planning Commission recommended originally. Also, disregarding the Planning Commission's recommend, recommendation for 13-plus unit developments, staff is pushing for a prohibition for RA and RS facing balconies with 50-feet property lines. And that's been covered very well tonight. And I won't go any further with that, but I, I strongly recommend that you allow balconies. And there are a couple of other reasons for that, though. In these situations, developers still want as many balconies on the back of the building and facing away from the parking lot, which means that the developer ends up designing and constructing two different building layouts, one with balconies in the front and one with balconies in the rear. One of the things that you might not be thinking about, currently balconies are placed on the green area. So the tenants have more positive and pleasurable existence on their balcony. The other thing that does is it puts the bedrooms in the back, which is closer to the parking lots. When the bedrooms are closer to the parking lots, the chances of car burglaries and things like that are decreased because there's a better chance of tenant hearing the, the I need to jump forward. My last concern, the third concern, as a past member of the Salem.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planning Commission.
I'm going to have to ask you what, I'll ask you. What's your third concern?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
My third concern is, as a past member of the Salem Planning Commission, this is the first time I recall staff ignoring the Planning Commission's recommendations. I might add that the Salem Planning Commission proposed amendments were supported unanimously by the Planning Commission. Also, in the development of our land use code, Senate Bill 100 created, it stated that the law follows certain and specific goals. And goal one is citizen involvement. And the Planning, Planning Commission is a major part of citizen involvement. And staff ignoring Planning Commission's recommendations, I think, is a very bad precedent. That concludes my.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thanks for coming down, Dan. Can you talk more about the, the parking on the five to 12 units?
You bet.
And, and kind of what that would actually look like? We had a, a person from Nen actually speak to it, it looking different than the neighborhood and unsightly. What's the design standard on how parking in between the street and a unit might actually look?
Well, I think this proposal is saying you can't park between the street and the building. You can't have your parking there. However, it may not be possible to bring the parking to the side. It may not be possible to bring it to the rear. I think if you could create a compromise where that is the desired parking, but not, it doesn't shut a whole project down just because that's the situation.
So like with a variance or?
I'm not sure that's your business. But, you know, maybe a variance. I don't know what other tools you have. But also, if you did that, you may require additional landscaping to, to mitigate the effect of the parking.
Sure. I will ask staff about that.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I did want to point out, just to correct the record, that the Planning Commission vote was not unanimous. There was one no vote on that. And that's in one of the attachments.
Thank you for the correction.
Counselor Anderson.
Thanks, and thanks for coming down and thanks for your service. I'm interested if you could respond a little bit to Mr. Manville's idea that we don't even have a parking mandate at all. As a developer, how would you feel about that?
I would support that. I'll tell you why.
Okay.
It was, it was mentioned earlier that, by maybe Mr. Manville, that the quickest way to go bankrupt, no, it wasn't, it was someone else, but the quickest way to go bankrupt is not to have parking. And that, it would become a market-driven situation. There probably are areas, or will be someday, where you could put a multifamily unit development that is near a parking structure that's currently there that has parking. So why would you need to require parking for the individual unit?
You think of one, can't you?
Yeah. And if I could interrupt you, I already did, sorry. But, you know, we just approved the Coes project downtown with, I don't know, 86 or 106 units where we only have 16 parking spaces for that precise reason, that there are garages and other places around it.
You bet. You bet. Yeah, you could look at that and you could take that out.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I apologize for not signing up.
Okay. This will be the last time, though, we'll put up with it.
Chase the seat across the room better. No, I'm sorry. Hi, my name's Ted Bernie. I'm from Ward Seven, and tonight I'm speaking as the Land Use Chair for Swan. Bear with me as we discuss the infamous balconies. Okay. I don't know if you can all hear me.
No, it's the, yeah.
That's the light. Okay. So anyhow, members of the Southwest Association of Neighbors would like to commend city staff, first of all, for their work to update design standards for multifamily design. In particular, our board has voted, and we would like to support the current topic change to 13-plus unit developments in regards to setbacks and compatibility dealing with balconies facing properties zoned single-family. The original proposal, the original proposed change to the multifamily design project was indeed regarding balconies. From city planning staff, provided a prohib, prohibition on balconies, a budding RS. That was the original proposal. And the Planning Commission amended and removed this original recommendation on prohibition of balconies, a budding RS property. So Swan looked at that, and we strongly support the new modification of the original prohibition, balcony prohibition, and current proposed change regarding balconies and 13-plus unit developments. The proposed change is that no balconies be allowed facing properties zoned single-family if the building facade is within 50 feet of those properties. Okay? 50 feet. So we believe this change will provide a positive design standard for both builders and RS properties impacted by new construction. The proposed design changes will help assure privacy for current RS property holders and possibly limit project appeals concerning construction of balconies overlooking private property. So current design standards require landscaping between 13-plus unit developments and RS property. But we believe this newer proposed standard, along with the current landscaping design requirement, is a much better solution to what we call a somewhat contentious issue. So thank you for your consideration, and I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
So, common sense, what is the deal with balconies? You, you're afraid people are going to do what?
First of all, we think everyone who lives in an apartment is equal to everyone else.
Right.
And in Vancouver, very, very, very expensive waterfront apartments are being built without balconies. I'm not exactly sure why. But if you were at the Planning Commission hearing, we learned that balconies add cost to development. As we all know, appeals add cost to development. And they're expensive to maintain. And we also think that by not having balconies in some units, it's only the ones facing, it's not the whole building, it might provide more affordable housing. Whoa, what a concept. You could have different housing rates in an apartment complex. So currently, we, there's a privacy issue. We also think it's an equitable housing issue, and it would probably be better off in the long term in terms of maintenance for the owners of the apartment building.
If I were to build an infill project that was a single family, wouldn't that also affect privacy of the surrounding? It would not.
No, it shouldn't. You're, you're held to a 35-foot design standard, I think, if you're talking four or fewer. 13-plus units, this is only for 13-plus units.
Yeah, I'm talking about introducing new, new homes or apartments in a neighborhood that may already think that it's full. And I'm just, well, I, I think it's been found that those that live in apartments enjoy the idea of being able to step outside, not necessarily to cause any disruption, but just because it gives them that sense of open space. That's why it's counted as open space.
Which is why we have the, I think, the common and open space requirement for larger units. We're just looking, we're just supporting the concept that balconies not be allowed within 50 feet of an RS facing, not, not around the whole building, just facing.
Okay. Great.
So that's our concept.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie, so much for your time and for coming down on behalf of Swan. I very much appreciate it. So it sounds to me like part of the concern of the balconies is a concern that, that might add cost to the developer. Again, I think the way the rule is drafted is about whether to prohibit or not. Again, it's about giving the developers flexibility, subject to what the market rate determines. But you did mention a privacy issue, which I understand. And I'm wondering, and I will look forward to reading those, these materials in greater detail, but it sounds to me like the concern is because the balconies would be within 50 feet of another property. And would it make a difference if there were trees? If there were, if there was landscaping? If it was a little more than 50 feet, then would that abate those privacy concerns that you were talking about?
Well, landscaping helps. It takes time for trees to grow. And I'm not an expert on the landscape design, but I think, you guys probably are, but they require one column or tree every 100 feet, or, or two, called CU units, I believe. And you count your trees in different ways and you have different shrubs. But I think the whole idea is probably, if you're 50 feet and further away from an RS home, which has been there for who knows how long, you can have your balconies. If you're closer, we believe the people there probably have the right to the privacy that they originally had.
Any further questions? Any questions for UNICEF, or would you like to have some time to kind of think about it and then call UNICEF?
I have a question for UNICEF for tonight.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to give staff the opportunity to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and allowing me to speak.
I was just wanting to give staff an opportunity to address a couple of the things that came up while it's kind of ripe and while we're still thinking about it. And so, can you address this issue between the Planning Commission's recommendation and your recommendation and how that, how we got where we are? and your recommendation and how that, how we got where we are? Maybe first?
Is the question regarding the balconies or generally the recommendation changes?
Both. But generally, how did we, you know, the suggestion was made that you ignored the planning commission's recommendation, which I doubt is the case, but I'm, I want to hear from you on how you considered the planning commission's recommendation and how you got to the point where you, it's not on the recommended staff report.
Sure. So I just wanted to clarify that we have done this before with other projects, whether it's State Street or ADUs, where we take the planning commission's recommendation, we consider it, and then we recommend, some we recommend, others we don't recommend. So it's not the first time that we've done that. What we usually do is we look through the reasoning kind of behind each recommendation and then weigh that against the project goals and the input that we've gotten from the community. The balconies issue, we tried to strike a compromise between the flexibility of having balconies and not facing single-family with that 50-foot setback to address some of the developers' concerns that were brought up in the planning commission, but also the community, it's one of the big issues that we have heard for a long time, and so we wanted to address that as well. So we are trying to kind of strike a compromise there.
And all of those options, the staff recommendation, the planning commission recommendations, all of those options are available to council to consider at this point?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm intrigued by Mr. Manville and his parking market-driven, and I was also very intrigued by Mr. Dorn saying, "That's fine by me," as a developer. So I think we're moving toward a postponement of this issue, but in anything that comes back, I'd love to see some discussion from the community development department about getting rid of the parking requirements.
Counselor Young.
Thank you. Sort of a follow-up question on specifically why it was recommended a 50-foot setback for balconies? Why that arbitrary number? What was it set at for?
Sure. So the discussion at the planning commission was that maybe there would be parking between the building, or maybe there's a wetland issue, or there's some reason that buildings could be pushed back or would need to be pushed back. And so the maximum height of a multifamily development in the RM zones is 50 feet. And so we, a lot of the setbacks that we've discussed in State Street and others, it's like one-for-one, one foot back. And so we just kind of went with 50 feet as a maximum height, 50 feet back, as a compatibility threshold that we've used in the past.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to full prohibition of parking in between a structure and the, and the street in the five to 12 range, what would be the mechanism? Or you could bring it back in as far as if a piece of property just cannot meet that, do we just say we don't care about the density potential then and let it go to a single family instead? Or how would we get around that?
We would allow people to apply for an adjustment. And so one of the recommendations, that isn't something you can do today, so it would kick you to a public hearing today, but we're recommending that if there's just one standard you can't meet, you would apply for an adjustment, which would be a staff review.
Okay.
Counselor Anderson.
Two other things that I'd like to hear some sort of response now or report later. One is the stored biking units, and I was intrigued to see that that city to the south of us does that already. And the other one is the -- it slips my mind right now, but it'll come back to me after somebody --
I'm still thinking about Jefferson with these biking.
Yeah, I'm thinking about my three porses.
Do you want me to respond to that? So we did, as part of the update to the Unified Development Code package last summer, we did some changes to the bike parking standards. And one of the things we did consider before bringing that forward was having short-term parking standards and long-term. The long-term would be storage, indoor, et cetera. We didn't have the time necessarily just to do that with that code amendment. So something we are thinking bigger picture, not just for multifamily, but something we would like to do citywide.
I did remember there's someplace in between you, you've all, well, actually, two things. One, you've already asked or talked about reducing the parking already, and I'm wondering if there's, you know, it's the 1.5 or per bedroom in a larger unit. And I think that may be because you're thinking there's going to be two separate people in the two bedrooms who might be roommates of some type with, they might each have their own vehicle, as opposed to a family, you know, with children who might be in the other room. So I'm interested if you could go just a little, a little more discussion on that. Thanks.
Counselor Lewis.
Okay, Eunice, just for clarification, this may be in the report, but I haven't read it all. Three-story multifamily, this is regarding balconies. I can still have my patio on the first floor facing the residential, single-family, but I can't on the second floor or the third floor. Certainly, two stories. If they were two stories, that would be prohibition that would be, in my mind, unfair. There are two-story houses that have balconies. So if I can't look at my neighbor across the yard, I don't want them looking at me. Second thing, if you turn around and look at the example of a three-story apartment building with balconies, you'll see that these are see-through areas where, where I live, over the last five years, a field has turned into, I think, about 450 apartments, all with decks. Now, I'm more than 50 feet, but they're all looking at me. And they have a covered in front, so if somebody's actually out on their deck sitting down, chances are, I wouldn't be able to see them. So why not look at, at issues like that? Why not look at compromises like that rather than just say no?
And that was something that was brought up recently, actually, from the home builders as a suggestion.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. I was just, I'm intrigued by Nenn's comment, especially about picnic tables not being double counted. So maybe when we come back, seeing how that might affect veins and open space.
I'm ready with a motion if there's any questions.
Counselor Hoy. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the record be held open for a minimum of two weeks and this issue be brought back to council after that time.
Okay. Second by Counselor Dr. Do you want to, do you have anything to say?
The only, the only thing I would just ask you to consider is whether you want to close the public hearing so you have no more oral testimony, or whether you want to just keep the record open.
Question before I respond to your, your question. Do ex parte rules apply here?
No, this is a legislative proceeding, so you're welcome to talk to whoever you want.
So I, I'm okay either way, then? Do we want further public testimony in the future? I would be fine with that.
It depends what staff comes back within that report, whether or not I think --
Probably just leave the hearing open.
Public actually seeing that might want to actually talk to us about it.
Yeah, let's just go with Hoy's motion. I think that --
Just closing the hearing, leaving the record open.
No, I, no, not closing the hearing, just leaving, just leaving the hearing open and
Help him draft the quickly.
Yeah.
So to clarify, your motion would be to continue the public hearing for at least two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. That was what I meant.
Second's still okay? Who's my second? Yes, here you are. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll do this again. But one, one suggestion, you now know what the issue generally sound like. I think kind of drafting up what you're thinking up and circulating your ideas as you're looking at amendments kind of gives everyone a chance to hear what the thinking's like, what the concerns are.
Please circulate your amendments to staff, and then we can provide it to council. Please don't talk amongst yourself and have a public meeting violation.
We won't have a public meeting, but can I talk to Hoy about it? Am I okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then Hoy can talk to me about what you talked about.
Yeah, okay. That's the problem, right there. Okay. Counselor Hoy, you have a motion under special orders of business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that city council direct staff to initiate a speed limit review for 17th Street from Mission Street Southeast to Silverton Road Northeast and 45th Street Northeast from Center Street Northeast to Sunnyview Road Northeast.
Second by Counselor Nordike.
Yes, thank you. As we've heard several times over the past couple of years, and most specifically at our last meeting, we've had complaints for residents speeding on 17th Street. I have heard them very often regarding 45th Avenue Northeast out in my neighborhood. And I, as, people aren't often aware that we don't get to control the speed limits in the city. You'd think the city council would get to control those things, but we don't. That's actually, there's a state law that says that's ODOTs purview, so we actually have to ask them to review our speed limits, and so that's what I'm asking to be done here. If we ever wanted to have all of the or more of the speed limits reviewed within the city, we would actually need a legislation from our state legislature to allow us to do that. I understand the city of Portland maybe had that happen recently, but that's the only city in the state that I'm aware of that actually has control over the speed limits. They're the ones, they were able to reduce them down to 20 miles an hour under that legislation, but we actually don't have that option. So in consultation with staff, this will actually initiate that process on this really small level, a couple of streets that I think are really critical to actually review now, and maybe it'll expand to something further in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
I want to thank Commissioner Hoy for explaining the law to me because I have been thinking for a long time, and based on all of my talk about pedestrians being killed, that we ought to reduce the speed limits. And, you know, so I think if this is the camel's nose in the tent, at some point, I would love to see if we can get the same sort of legislative approval that Portland got so we can control our own speed limits, because I think a reduction of 25 to 20 is appropriate. And I think there are many places when reduction of 35 to 25 or 40 to 30, there are lots of reductions we can make on many streets. And as we're told time and time again, the lower the speed, the more chances of somebody surviving an accident. It's almost geometrically, not arithmetically, in what it goes, what it goes up, the higher the speed is. So I hope this works, and then I think we should continue to go even further to look at the speed limits in the city.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having had a 30-year career in law enforcement, that wasn't my first time explaining the law to a lawyer, just for the record.
It was the first time a lawyer ever listened to you, though.
That could be. But I actually have a, I would actually like to call --
Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually had more of a point than just ribbing my colleague. I would actually, I think that Chief Moore may have some information for us on this topic regarding speeds and what we've, data we've recently learned from our speed cameras. I think now would be a really good time if he could come up and share that.
Certainly. Chief, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor, again, Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. Counselor, I don't have a lot of information on the, on the, on the speed because we only have one intersection that it has a speed on green. Just so you're all aware, we do have, excuse me, we do have three intersections, actually, we have three intersections right now with photo red light and one intersection with speed on green. We are, I think on March 1st, we will be adding three additional photo red light intersections, those being Kubler and Commercial and Kubler, Commercial and Madrona, and Hawthorne and Center, I believe. We will be phasing in speed on green as we find out the impact it has on our courts and our system in being able to handle any increases in citations.
Chief, just, I'm sorry, what, could you explain what speed on green is?
Speed on green actually --
I thought it was a pool term.
Yeah. Speed on, basically what it is doing is it is monitoring the speed of people that are going through each of those intersections.
Okay.
And we were able to set a particular speed that if they're over that speed, they can be issued a citation.
Ah, okay.
That's exactly, yeah. I will tell you, we do have one, we have speed on green at two intersections, well, one intersection, but two approaches, Fisher and Silverton, and Silverton and Fisher. And I can tell you that we are issuing a great deal of citations at those intersections.
Yeah. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to be interrupted, but are there others that you wanted to talk about? I apologize. I, I just hadn't heard that term.
Yep.
Makes sense. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in regards to hitting ODOT up to change all our, we've done that a lot. Staff has actually brought some to us. The neighborhood associations bring them forward. We've actually lowered some, we've raised some because that makes more sense, and it was kind of just a blanket out, and as development happens and things change. So I'm mindful of looking at these, knowing that we've had some significant issues in that area as well. See what they tell us.
Yes, sir.
Just one last point. The interesting thing on 17th is it's not a consistent speed limit, even though it's kind of a consistent neighborhood. So it's kind of, I think it really merits a review. I'm thinking more down south, but yeah, the north section too, especially because there's a whole section of 17th. Even though it is a major bike route, there's a whole section of 17th up in the north area that doesn't have any bike lanes, and it's kind of, it's my route downtown, and it's not so fun.
Okay. Although, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Okay. What do we got? 5B analysis or something? Okay, that's you.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I want to apologize to council and the public for the lateness of the report being provided. We were waiting for additional information regarding a review of one of the potential temporary shelter sites that was brought up by council last Tuesday. Council last Tuesday requested a zoning analysis for a temporary shelter and low-barrier shelter and considerations for adjusting the camping restriction. The site that was reviewed, that was brought up last Tuesday and was reviewed, is the current or recently vacated juvenile detention center, Marion County Juvenile Detention Center. I had the opportunity and Arches has had the opportunity to go through the building, and the recommendation is not to proceed with that building as a temporary shelter. While the building itself has been vacated, there are still at-risk youth on the campus, and the Marion County Juvenile Director, as well as Arches, are very concerned about mixing at-risk youth with individuals who may, as we heard earlier during testimony, who may have, have trauma or have had experience preying on vulnerable individuals. So the recommendation is not to proceed. In addition, the building itself has some layout, some sightline considerations that really aren't suitable for a warming center model that is based upon volunteers. There's also information that was requested regarding the zoning for a permanent low or no-barrier shelter, specifically the building located at 1185 22nd Street. So there's information in the report that lays out the process for having that building be used as a nonprofit shelter. As we heard last week from Jimmy Jones, that is a very strong site because of its layout, its condition, for a permanent low-barrier shelter. And I think as was also discussed, there may be opportunities for state assistance with acquiring that building, and that would certainly be, I think, it already has been selected by council as one of its legislative priorities. So the recommendation is to proceed with Arches, with the Mid Valamette Valley Community Action Agency, on efforts to receive state assistance. And then again, the zoning process is laid out for you and the public. The other item that is included in the report is the navigation center, and our efforts continue on a site that would allow a navigation center, as well as our efforts with the state to secure state well as our efforts with the state to secure state funding for that, for that need. The report then goes into a recommendation not to suspend the camping restriction. And the reasons really are, again, much of what you've heard already, and that is it would just move some of the challenges and behaviors from some individuals to a different area. And without a management of that site, we would be creating, based upon past experience, experience under the Marion Square Bridge, experience at the private property outside of Wallace Marine Park that was referenced, just creating a condition that would be very problematic and one that the city would have to respond to. So, the recommendation is to not relax the camping restriction in industrial areas. We urge, with the Mid-Walamette Valley Community Action Agency, we urge that the city and council continue to really focus on those permanent solutions, and focus on our staff time and resources on those opportunities for permanent low-barrier shelter. And I won't say we've exhausted all possibilities for this winter, but it really is becoming a real opportunity cost for us, and recommend that we focus our efforts on the additions, enhancements for later this year, for next winter. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, Counselor?
Okay, this leaves me with the thought that by process of elimination, the folks that are on the streets of downtown are going to stay there until further notice.
Well, I think there are, and Nicole Oates, who perhaps along with some of the police officers for the city and the housing authority have, have some of the most experience interacting with individuals and trying to connect them with, with shelter space, that this, the lack of shelter space is not an absolute. There are shelter spaces available, some nights more than others, and certainly depending upon the reasons why someone chooses not to shelter adds, adds limitations. However, from our interaction with individuals who are homeless, some individuals who are homeless, when shelter space has been provided or offered, there have been reasons why that person has chosen not to go to shelter and stay wherever they were located. So, I don't want to say absolutely that this, what I'm providing tonight means someone is going to stay on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, I, no.
Do you have more questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have been talking about this enough. You know, maybe, maybe we should ask the folks underneath the Rite Aid canopy and the other folks downtown, hey, if we gave you a tent and a, and a place to be, would you rather be there than on the streets of downtown Salem? And if those folks would say, as long as, and then give us all of their things that keep them out of shelters, I mean, I don't see a whole lot of services now. We're talking with them, they're still there. So, the question for me is, is it time to think about supporting those folks at a little bit higher level, which a tent camp would be? If I'm, if I'm homeless, and you give me the option, sit on the downtown streets or go to a camping place, I'm probably going to go to a camping place with my tent.
Okay. Any further just questions for the manager? All righty, let's, let's move on to information reports, then.
We have 5C.
5C. What's 5C?
Hospital.
Oh, the hospital. Oh, gosh, okay. Who's, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a motion on this one?
Sorry. I, I kind of had a, about the camping thing, real quick.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We've been hearing for a few weeks now, especially for today. I mean, if you think about it, it's been a month now since we passed the initial, no, no, I'm sorry. What?
Just, you don't make any decisions.
Since the initial camping ban. And we've had countless individuals who've been coming in here, homeless advocates, people who are houseless, who've been sharing what's, you know, their stories, what's happening to them. We've been hearing about the suffering that's occurring. We're also, I mean, we're also seeing, you know, the weather. It's, it's winter. And granted, it's been somewhat of a warmer, somewhat drier here and there, but it's still winter. And, I mean, we still have people who are living on the streets who now, instead of having a covered, somewhat protected space, if they're lucky, they're able to find something underneath one of those aisles, or whatever you call it, at Rite Aid. Or for those who are able to go to a shelter, I mean, there's still some places in, some shelters that are full. For example, the Safe Sleep, from my understanding, it's, even though we expanded it to nine additional beds, they're full again. So, I mean, we still have people who are still homeless, who, some who want to go to shelter, but other ones who cannot go to shelter. And we've already heard stories from individuals about reasons why they don't want to go to shelter. It's not safe. They'd rather be on the street, in the elements, because it's safer there than it is to be in a shelter for those individuals. And I feel like this report is just not providing us with what we need to make sure that we're protecting our people, because, I mean, we've heard one individual, or at least earlier, what was his name? Paul Tolman? He was a homeless person on, on High Street, and he's, he was a, he was born here in Salem in 1963, Salem born and raised. So, these aren't just individuals who are coming from anywhere. These are people who lived here or were born and raised here in Salem, who are now going through the suffering, who are continuing to suffer. I mean, I, I was hoping that we'd have something more than just this, we're having no changes, but I'm not sure what we can do.
Okay. All right. Counselor Hoy? I've got 5C.
No. Counselor Nordike was first.
Okay.
You can go first, Tom.
You know, I'm listening to this stuff, and I originally supported the camping ban. And, you know, I agree to a great extent with what Counselor Leonger said. And, you know, I look at this and listen tonight, and I thought, well, you know, maybe we need a camping ban downtown, city parks, and in residentially-owned districts. Because what I see that is happening is, with the cleanout on Wallace Marine Park, and I know out by the freeway admission, that was ODOT and not the city, but the people do end up moving downtown, and they're no safer downtown than they were out in the other areas. And they might be, they might be more safer in the other areas. So, any way we look at it, we've got people who are in bad situations. And is it better to have them bad situations spread out in the city with, again, no, no city control, or, you know, organized status that we talked about when we discussed Wallace Marine Park and other places? Or is it better to have them downtown? You know, and I'm not sure what the answer is, but, you know, this whole thing just disturbs me. And it sure seems like we ought to do something. And, but we don't, we don't want, for many, many reasons that we've heard, camping, tending, sitting downtown is, it's not a good situation for the public, but they're left there with no place else.
So, is your thought, Counselor, so I understand it, you would do no camping and a sit-ly, so that the downtown, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'd be willing to discuss sit-ly, but I'm really talking about-
No, because you're saying they would leave downtown. I'm trying to figure out, are you saying so a sit-ly would be part of your proposal?
It might be. I think I, you know, that might be a trade-off I might be willing to make, even though I still have concerns about sit-ly being a status law, not a conduct law. And there's also some constitutional concerns in the nice circuit. But, you know, we've got to make some trade-offs, and I'd at least be willing to consider that. But I would first want to see, why can't we just ban camping in parks and the downtown area and residentially-zoned areas, and leave it at that? I mean, that'd be my first stab at it.
Okay. Counselor Nordike?
One of the things I said from early on in joining council is that I wanted to find evidence-based solutions to addressing homelessness. And one of the things that we heard when we talked to Jimmy Jones last week was his adamant opposition to organized camping. And I consider him as one of our local experts in homelessness. I am not an expert in homelessness. That's why I talk to people like Jimmy Jones, as well as the executive directors for several other homeless shelters and homeless service providers in the area. There is no question that a roof over every head is superior to car camping and camps. There's no question about that. There are also concerns about, as I alluded to earlier, if you're in a campground, there is nothing to stop someone from preying on you. I liked the idea of organized camping because I believed that it would provide a safe and secure and a clean place for people to go. But when we talk to folks who work with the homeless every day, I'm not hearing them telling us to support organized camping, which leaves us with the possibility of unorganized camping. And again, you have to balance both the environmental concerns of being out in the elements, right? And the reality of what it means to live in the shadows, where there's no light, there's no police force right next to you, and you never know who is going to come up to your tent. And we know that many of our homeless, but not all, of course, have mental illness, have drug addiction, have physical disabilities, or sometimes all three. And so, I understand, first of all, how frustrating it can be. And when I studied homelessness and how other cities have looked at this, it's not uncommon for cities to continually evolve in their process for how they address an intractable issue that is a crisis years in the making. And as our city manager pointed out, there is an opportunity cost for every decision we make. We have this much money to solve homelessness. This is how much we would really need. This is, this would take federal dollars, state dollars, county dollars, and then our tiny piece of the pie that we have to actually give to homelessness. So, with the limited money that we have, I want to use it towards strategies that are proven to work, that are cost-effective and evidence-based. And no expert has stood up here and told me that organized camping is evidence-based. We understand it to be managing homelessness, and that there are significant drawbacks to that. I have been cautiously optimistic that we will find a building, and we must find a building. As I understand, a lot of the camping is complaint-driven. And so, part of this is asking our public, if you see someone camping off in the woods, are you going to call the police on that person? Do you recognize this person has nowhere else to go? Where are you going to tell that person to go? Where? So, my position has been and must be, I'm going to vote in support of solutions that I think will work in the long run and in the short term, wherever necessary. And that means there is no good immediate solution. This has been a struggle for all of us, but I know that we're all in this together. I cannot wait for an opportunity to go to our legislature and demand more funding on this issue. It is sorely needed. This is why I want us to have as a standing agenda item, what are we doing this week? What are our latest numbers? How many people are getting pulled into HREP? How many people are getting the veterans housing? How many teenagers are still living on the streets? So, I encourage all of us to continue working with our first responders, our staff, our executive directors in homelessness. We've heard from Jimmy Jones many times. There's no doubt he is well-qualified. Let's not forget, he's not the only well-qualified local expert who can speak on this issue. And I encourage all of us to tour a lot of the shelters, to get to know these folks. But in the end, I support housing first, first and foremost. It is like the LED light bulb of addressing homelessness. There's an upfront cost, but it saves money in the long run. The immediate, present, right now, does not have an easy solution, and it is frustrating. I want a mobile response unit, but guess what? As our chief pointed out, a mobile response unit is only as good as the destinations available to it. We don't have a sobering center, in part because two of our community partners, as Counselor Hoy pointed out, pulled out. We don't have a building, in large part because none of the landlords we talked to were willing to work with us. So, again, this is a rock and a hard place. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Very good. Counselor Kazer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just suggest to the council, I don't think we're in any position tonight to make any kind of motion or recommendation even, or really, we got, we, we asked, I was not present at the last meeting, but the council asked for a staff report. I think we need time to look at it. I think we need time to talk with our community, with neighbors, with kind of what Counselor Nordike was saying. But I would recommend, my colleagues not recommend or take action tonight on anything until we have a better plan in place.
Yeah. That's pretty much where we're headed. And I, unless there's, is there more that we'd like to question the manager about? I know Osik is next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Tom. I'm looking at you, thinking of Osik.
No, I just wanted to get back to what Tom was saying a little bit, and say, I get what you're saying. I kind of see the idea of, we were talking earlier about choice for building design, and I think the, to some extent, what we did with the camping ban is we took a choice away from some folks that isn't good, but maybe for them is slightly better. And so, just considering potentially giving that option back as a temporary measure until we can find some more permanent housing, and it's one that doesn't cost money to the city, I mean, for what it's worth.
Counselor Anderson?
I appreciate what Counselor Kazer had to say, and I agree that we can't do something immediately right now tonight. But I am going to make a motion that the staff come back, I move that the staff come back at the next city council meeting with a proposal for council consideration that would ban camping in downtown, in city parks, and in residentially-zoned neighborhoods.
Second by Osik.
I think we've talked about this enough. I'm not saying we're going to pass this, but I'd like to have it at least looked at so we can talk about it a little more.
I think, I think if you, you and I both know, with our staff, they're constantly looking at this issue. And when they, they feel that they have a proposal to bring to us, they will bring it to us. I don't think we need to set time limits on it. I think we've got a, we've gotten their recommendation now. It seems like we now have an opportunity to kind of step back, take another look. I really like the advice from Counselor Nordike, which is to, as I understood it, really was the, the understanding of what we are doing, and then making sure that as we make these decisions, they're not on the fly, they're evidence-based, they're based on our capacity to work on them. I, I'd ask you to kind of hold off on this and give it some thought before we come back. Does that not, not sell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I think we've all given a thought. No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'd like to vote on this.
You want to go ahead? Okay. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, staff commented, but staff worked in our direction as well, that there's an opportunity cost, and essentially the cost for us as well. Staff is going to be spending several days putting this report together. We're going to have an hour and a half of testimony at the beginning of next meeting on people speaking to the issue that's on the agenda again as well.
Yeah.
Which is why we're here at 9:30, and we still haven't gotten to a significant issue that somebody wants us to take care of for them tonight still.
Okay. Counselor?
Yeah, I, we, we keep hearing the same thing, because we never agreed to narrow the issue. So, here's the issue for me. In the next two months, are we going to allow folks to camp in tents somewhere, or- In the next two months, are we going to allow folks to camp in tents somewhere, or are we going to have them sitting on the streets in downtown Salem? To think that having them sitting on the street in downtown Salem is a neutral idea means that we're not listening to the business people who are affected by the folks that are in, and I'm not blaming the folks that are on the street in downtown. I'm just saying the fact is, it's affecting the livelihood of the folks in downtown. Is there a place that they could not only have a tent rather than nothing, but is there a place where they could have some privacy and not being affecting people? And I don't know if there's such a place, but I'd certainly like to look into it.
Well, do look into it and consider, as you describe, what you're describing, I think it's the same question I had earlier of Councilor Anderson, then you are proposing a defined camping policy and a sit lie because you're suggesting that everyone affected by this will move out of downtown Salem into a tent somewhere. So I hope that as you, as anyone comes forward, they put all this together, and I'm not sure that's what you want to do.
Well, I, I think I heard Councilor Anderson said, it's a possibility to look at both.
Maybe.
I'm saying the same thing.
I've been down that road with this council. The maybes are, it's, it's kind of the Charlie Brown, let's, let's take a little time, step back just for a week or so, and make sure that we're, we're all talking about the same thing. Because this has gotten to be, I think, just a spin on this issue, and you're just doing it again, just taking another spin, I think, on this one. Okay, everybody ready to vote?
Can we state the motion?
Go ahead, Tom.
The city modified its camping ban ordinance to ban camping in downtown, in city parks, and in residentially zoned neighborhoods. That's it. Also, that they come back at the next meeting with that, that proposal.
Councilor Young.
Could you clarify, is there a certain time period that you're asking for, or just in general?
Just the general. And I'm saying this because there are a lot of concerns, correctly so, if we have an organized camping area and we establish it and have the city take some responsibility. I'm not saying we're going to do that at all. I'm saying we just are banning camping downtown, city parks, residentially zoned neighborhoods.
So it'd be, all commercial zones outside of downtown would be eligible for camping?
Correct.
Okay. So Lancaster, South Commercial, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood it. Okay. Okay. And Broadway, and, let's see. I'll just help you imagine what this will look like, because Kaser's had to live with it for a while.
Well, I'm asking for a proposal. If it comes back, we can then, somebody can amend it and say, no commercial areas.
Maybe, that's the problem, I think, with trying to do this kind of stuff on the fly.
Well, you know, we can, we can wait for the long-term solutions, and while we're doing that, more time goes.
Or we could take five minutes and think about it. And that's all I'm asking.
Well, I'm giving us two weeks to think about it.
And this is what you came up with? Okay.
I said yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay's up. Motion passes. Alrighty, so you guys will have that ready next meeting? Okay.
We got nothing to do, right?
And what's our next action? We've had reports, anything on, what do we got? Oh, hospital parking.
I have a question before I make a motion. Are we going to be hearing input, or are we just going to vote on the issue based on the written information that we have? In other words, are you ready for a motion?
We've, we've had public comment, okay? You've heard the amount of public comment on this issue.
This is the Salem Park.
Yeah. I mean, I, it was open for public comment.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify before I made a motion.
Yeah, make your motion.
So I'm just basing this on what I've read, and, because I haven't had any other input, so.
You get the...
Great.
Yeah.
I move that City Council not adopt the fee waiver request from Salem Hospital.
Second by Osik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a quarter of a million dollars that we generally, as in talking with staff, we typically don't have these kinds of waiver requests at this level. I, you know, it's a quarter of a million dollars, and that's, that we will put to good use, that we wouldn't be waiving for anybody else. I don't see that the hospital doesn't have the ability to pay, and looking at their, you know, the amount of money they take in every year and their expenditures, it seems like they can do this as part of their overall remodel and expansion. I just think that, I just don't support the waiver.
Councilor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions of staff. We get zero revenue from those parking spaces at the current time, correct?
That's correct. They're not metered spaces.
And the applicant has actually developed massively in excess of those parking spaces and are actually running shuttles for the people who typically park in those spaces.
That's correct.
And there's going to be a public safety hazard, potentially because of construction equipment and pass-away, whether or not you can get vehicles served. So my question is then, looking at the configuration of that, if we took, which is a university coming off of Mission Street, made that a one-way, and made it the only way in, and everybody has to come out the other two streets, can they make that a one-way street? And would that give them enough passage, and how much would it cost to actually make them one-way streets for two years?
Well, I would strongly recommend, I, the mayor's words of, of a few minutes ago are ringing in my ear. I don't think that's something that we should decide, that the council should decide.
Would they have that option potentially?
We would have to see a proposal, then look at it. I mean, we could certainly do interim traffic control of, of any kind.
And that would be up to the app, or the, them to ask for that as well, otherwise?
And then, and then we would take a look, probably have to run it through the Citizens' Advisory Traffic Commission to, to review and, and, and give us a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, Christian, I think this is for you. Is the city requiring these spaces be vacated for the construction?
That, I, I don't know if we're requiring it. We do have the consultant for the hospital here that may be able to address that question.
Well, actually, the requirement would come from the city, not, not their choice.
True, but it's not my department that would make that requirement, so I would need to verify either with Public Works or with the consultant or that, if it's a requirement.
I don't believe we've required, I think this is a, this is the, the hospital making the, the recommendation for, for, for safety reasons.
Did you want to ask the hospital guy? Come on up.
I was dying back there, so thank you for calling me up. So this is being proposed, oh, Alden Kazowitz with Scott Edwards Architecture on behalf of Salem Hospital. So this is being proposed exclusively as a community benefit. This does not benefit the hospital at all. It's not about facilitating the construction. It's not about making room for any hospital need. It's about unencumbered access to the emergency department. With the construction project that's occurring on campus, all the circulation to the emergency department is rerouted to University Street. It used to happen on Capitol Street, now it has to go to University Street. So what this is about is getting vehicles off the road to make the room for people going to the ED, which we all know when you're going to the ED, you want that to be as easy as possible. So the reason that they're requesting the waiver is because it does not benefit them, the hospital, it's a community benefit. And then beyond that, they've spent all this energy providing, you know, the offset, which is the additional 300 stalls that are at the Kmart parking lot. So this is not a benefit to Salem Hospital, this is a benefit to the community. It's not a, it's not a requirement at all. We could, the parking could go back tomorrow, and that's fine.
Okay. Councilor Kaser.
Thank you. Actually, I have a follow-up question for you. So I'm just looking at a map here of the area. My understanding is Capitol Street will be closed completely.
It is partially closed.
Okay.
Yep, so it still provides access to the parking garage.
Sure.
And then it cuts across the surface lot to University Street.
So will the parking garage still be open?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So if I'm a patient or whatever, going to the hospital, I can use Capitol Street to access the parking garage?
Correct.
And I can egress out of there as well, back onto Mission?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, so Oak Street is also going to be open, as it is now, unencumbered to the ER and parking, drop-off, all that stuff.
So they have modified Oak Street. They're controlling access to Oak Street to just ED traffic. And so if someone earlier asked about making University a one-way street, that would not be possible with the current plan because we still have a tremendous amount of people who go to Oak Street, thinking that's how they've always gone. They get turned around and are redirected back east on Oak, south on Capitol, across the surface lot into the parking structure, so it still requires two-way traffic on Capitol. But yeah, we are restricting access on Oak Street significantly, just to make sure that it's open for ED use.
Okay, so you can go down Oak Street to the ED, and then you can exit out on Capitol, back to Mission? Because there's that roundabout.
Yep, it rounds about and takes you back, correct.
And then University, Leslie, and what's the last, maybe that was the only other one? Those are going to be the same, they're two-way, you're just, Salem Health just wants to eliminate the parking so that the road is wider.
Yep, exactly.
To allow two-way traffic.
They're narrow roads.
There.
Yep. It truly is no benefit to Salem Hospital, it truly is a benefit to the community. It's about unencumbered access.
Do you have any, can I just ask, follow, do you have any insight to why Salem Health is just proposing to pay for one month out of a 30-month project?
Well, that's, because they, the street, it's already closed. And so this was pushed until this time, and so we, we didn't want to be in violation of, of city policy while this was being resolved, so the first month was paid.
So like, the parking's already closed off?
Yes, it's already all closed.
Currently?
Yep.
I see.
Yep, it's already all closed.
Okay, that was not clear in the staff report. It's already been done. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, I'm going to, I guess, ask the question. I perceive a benefit for Salem Hospital to having those spaces vacated, and that is that their construction vehicles and the construction itself will be, will be easier to perform than if they had, for example, 57 hospital employees parking in those 57 parking spaces. So I do believe that there's a benefit for Salem Health, and I think it's wise for them to suggest.
Most of the construction traffic, traffic is actually exiting out onto Capitol Street. So we tried to keep all the traffic off those streets, again, to make sure that there's access for ED patients. So yeah, the vehicle, the construction traffic's on Capitol.
Maybe I ask it this way. Are any of the 57 spaces filled today?
No, it's already all shut down. It was all previously Salem Hospital employees in the Marion County Psychiatric Crisis Center, which is located at the corner of Oak and, and University, and the hospitals provided them supplemental parking on an existing lot to offset that loss of stalls for the psychiatric crisis center.
Councilor Kaser.
I have a question for staff, and that is, I just totally lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
It happens to the...
Yeah, I know. The, oh, is there other instances where this has happened before in the city where a construction project is happening and somebody comes to council requesting a waiver for, for parking, the, the fee that would be paid for closing off the parking spot?
This is the first, yes, the first time to my knowledge that we've received a request for this kind of waiver. We frequently have parking spaces that are taken offline for construction projects, but without a request for a waiver.
And those are charged either daily or monthly, it sounds like, per parking space?
Generally monthly.
Okay, and there's no discretion between what type of space it is?
No.
As far as the charge goes, it's just whatever, whatever it is? Do you know why Salem Health was just proposing the one month?
So the one-month proposal was in the materials we initially received from Salem Health before it was actually scheduled to come to this meeting tonight. I believe that it was as a form of compensation that they thought would be a reasonable amount. Not, I, it may have been tied in their mind to the one month, but we had not yet scheduled it for a council meeting at the time we received that, that recommended payment.
I could ask one more follow-up question, since, since you're still there.
Yeah, of course.
Was the fees for removing this parking included in the project budget? Or was this kind of like a, oh, we didn't realize? Okay.
Yeah, and staff has told me they'd never received a request to shut down 57 stalls for 30 months. This is unprecedented in the city of Salem. Typically, these closures are to address, we want to put our dumpster in the, or we want to reserve that parking for construction access right adjacent to the site. I don't know if you've had experience with, we just want to close down stalls so that we have better access to a certain important community resource. This is kind of a, an anomaly that I don't believe the code's really written to specifically address. I don't believe that fee structure is, was written to address situations like this.
But perhaps it sounds like, too, that Salem Health didn't necessarily go and investigate if that was going to be a, incur a charge either?
Well, it's really my fault.
If that was in the, in the project plan?
It truly is my fault. As lead architect, I just didn't, I, I wasn't anticipating that, and so I didn't prep them that there was going to be this quarter million dollar charge. Because again, it's just a convenience thing.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, just in terms of my thought process and reading this, and that's why I asked the question ahead of time, are we going to get to hear from somebody before I make a motion? Because I just had to read what I read, and, you know, in my mind, you, the Salem Hospital offering one thirtieth of the actual fee was, just to be frank, it was a little offensive.
Dismissive, yeah.
It was a little bit offensive. And I, you know, I had to come back, kind of come to us and said, hey, we'll pay half, or we'll do three-quarters, and just ask for a partial, and I'd be like, yeah, that seems reasonable. But just to say one out of 30, that didn't, that didn't work for me. So I just wanted to give you that feedback in terms of what's in, in my thought process on the whole deal.
My thought process was that the whole fee should be waived, honestly. The reason that, and I paid, I submitted the check for $8,500 from my company, just because I didn't want to put the hospital in a position of violation of, of city code while this matter was resolved. To me, the fee isn't applicable to this situation. This is not the intent of the fee, and truly, I, I understand where you're coming from, and, and I respect that opinion, but this is not the intent of that fee, the way that the hospital's proposing for these parking stalls, so.
Councilor Kaser.
We've got one more question, I guess. For Oak Street and Leslie Street, I guess, and University, too, the, all of those spaces are closed off currently. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So nobody can park there, staff, or patients, or visitors?
The bulk of Oak Street was already...
Just nobody.
Private, it's a private right-of-way, it didn't have any parking on it already. This is just a section from University to 12th. Yep.
I see.
Yep.
Okay. And that's how it would remain for 30 months?
Correct.
In that way.
That's the proposal.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know if this is for the gentleman from the hospital or for staff, but have you looked at other options, like maybe, you know, it's such a, a large campus now, and these streets are essentially turning almost into private roads? Have you looked at vacating them, or, and I don't even know, Mr. Fernandez might have an opinion on that, I'm just thinking out loud, is that an option?
Yeah, the, the hospital owns most, but not all of the properties. In that, what, what you think of as the hospital campus, there have been requests by the hospital to vacate more streets in the area, but because they're still accessed by other businesses, and the other businesses are unwilling to grant the permission for the vacation, that's why they remain public. When the hospital buys it all out, then they can come in, and we've supported the, the other street vacations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you very much. Councilor Hoy, then, your motion is, you want to state it one more time?
My motion was to not grant the waiver.
Okay. Councilor Kaser.
So after having a little bit more information, it helps clarify some things. I'm still very reluctant, though, to completely waive all of this. It sounds like the, the project management on this, kind of, they missed their due diligence when it came to this. And that's, that's not our fault, that's not the city's fault, that's completely on the project management of that. There's contingencies for things like that, too, or there should be, if you're managing tens of million dollars or however big their project is. The second thing is, there's no precedent for this, and once we start down this road, there will be. And we can fully expect other people coming to us pretty much every time asking for a waiver, and pointing to Salem Health and saying, well, you did it for them, why don't you do it for me? And then you come into questions of fairness and, and why, and you have to weigh, is this public benefit, is this private, and what are those definitions and standards and guidelines that we just don't have? I felt the same as Councilor Hoy, that this felt very disingenuous when I first read it, as we'll pay one thirtieth of your fee. And they do provide a, a, a large public benefit, but I'm almost tempted to try to say Salem Health... Health, let's come back to the table and figure something out. I'm intrigued, Counsel Nanki, with your idea of retaining the parking in some way, perhaps. I have no idea if that would actually work, and we need more time to do that, but I think this is not just a black and white issue. And it sets precedence for our city, and we have to be careful with the decision. So I would almost, I don't know, try to invite Salem Health back to the table to work out something, and come back to council with a different proposal.
Is that your?
I guess if, to, perhaps a substitute motion would be to, whatever that, I don't know what the word is, I guess, put this back to Salem Health and the city to work out some other type of proposal, to bring back to council.
Second?
Second.
Second by Hoey. Okay, Nanki?
Yeah, kind of in that same line, it sounded like the gentleman said that the initial purpose of this kind of a process doesn't match with what they're doing. Do we see potential for similar things happening down the line? And should we have something in our system to account for it?
Before I turn it over to Director Fernandez, I would like to point out that in the attached materials that we received from Salem Health in the context that they provided, one of the reasons that they gave for requesting the parking spaces be taken offline is that all three streets will see large equipment and construction traffic volume increases, and with their narrow clear width, it's likely that there will be damage to parked vehicles to occur.
Right.
So the rationale was not about improved access or community benefit to the emergency room, it was impacts from construction and impacts to other vehicles. And that is something that we do see around construction sites and where we have approved closures of spaces historically.
The comment that this is unprecedented and that these fees really did not envision something like this is absolutely correct. On the other hand, as we discussed it internally, my concern was exactly counsel, the concern that Counsel Kaiser expressed is, you know, where does this land? I mean, this is a very large project with a lot of access points and the like, but I was concerned that, you know, then, you know, where does it end with people requesting? Because it can be, it can be anything, and there are a lot of good reasons to do that. And ultimately, that's the fee that's established. There is no waiver by the staff for a fee that's established by council. So ultimately, it's the council's decision to change that, but I agree with the point that this is unprecedented. But I also agree with Counsel Kaiser that where do we go from here?
There should be another way.
Counsel Anderson?
This is, I think, a question for the city attorney.
I thought you were going to make a motion to extend.
I will be, but we've got seven more minutes.
Well, we've got about seven more minutes.
I understand that. We've been talking about that in the council.
Yeah.
Let's say the substitute motion is voted down and the original motion is passed, isn't the staff and Salem Hospital still free to come back with a different proposal?
Yes, they could.
Okay.
Counsel Young?
A quick follow-up to your amendment, Counsel Anderson.
Counsel Kaiser has a substitute motion.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, substitute motion. Okay. By redirecting it back to staff to consult with Salem Hospital, will Salem Hospital still be required to keep paying the fee until they come back with something? Or is that going to be put on hold? I just want to be clear.
I would assume, when I'm looking at staff, that the payment would continue. I mean, they do it every month, it's not like they're paying it all in one big chunk, I guess. Yeah.
Thank you.
If that is correct. Yes.
Ready? Yes, Counsel?
Given the budgetary shortfalls we are facing, it is not fiscally responsible to allow a fee waiver in the amount of a quarter of a million dollars at this time.
Okay. Any other words of wisdom? Okay, let's vote then. All those in favor of Counsel Kaiser's substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Do you need to see who voted? Okay. Ayes?
Ayes.
Okay. Okay. I assume everyone else is a nay. Okay. Motion fails. Okay, we're back to have you make a new motion, I guess?
Main motion.
Main motion? It's a substitute motion?
It failed. So now the main motion is still on the floor.
Okay. All those in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. Nanki's a nay. Okay. Okay, we've got five minutes. Anything on information reports? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I know it's 9:55, and I'm the last person that wants to extend the meeting, but I do want to give an opportunity for the
You'll be the first person to say, let's extend.
I certainly will.
Okay.
I just want to give, because I asked her to come here, I would feel horrible that she sat through this entire meeting, the city librarian, and not have a chance to come talk to us for a moment about some issues related to the library move.
Okay. But let's do get that extension, so we're not
Mr. Mayor? I move to extend the meeting 20 minutes.
We've got first reading and second reading.
We don't have to use it.
Yeah, we don't have to use it, I'm just
I'm worried it won't be enough, okay.
Just go 30 minutes.
No, I'm just looking at what I'm dealing with here, and lots of chat. Okay, let's get the, we've got a motion to extend for 20 minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Now, it depends on you, Sarah, how much you talk.
I will try to keep it brief, then. Well, thank you very much for having me here, and thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about how we are working on making Broadway the, we're calling it the Salem Public Library at Broadway, how we're going to make that a welcoming and inclusive space. So Gretchen Bennett is here as well, she is the liaison for the Human Rights Commission. We have had a joint task force of Salem Public Library employees and some of the Human Rights Commission members, and also interested community members who go to HRC meetings frequently, work together on coming up with some ideas for not just the Broadway library space, but all library spaces, to make sure that they are living up to our ideal of being welcoming and inclusive space. One of the big ideas was included in your report, which is to make the interior vestibule area have a signage that really highlights our values as a library that came about in 2013, as our, as a part of our strategic plan, then. So, and those values even speak to the value of diversity and being a welcoming space for everyone in the community. So that's all I really want to say. I don't want to keep you guys here much longer, but please let me know if you have any questions. Yeah.
Sarah, could you remind the rest of the council the dates of the move and the
Yes, I absolutely can. Thank you, Counsel Hoey. Oh, man. Yeah, so a week from today, we are closed at the main library. We, if you were to go there right now, you would see a lot of boxes, a lot of packing, a lot of moving. So we are in the throes of it already, and we are opening at the Broadway space on February 18th. And one of the other big ideas for us is to have a party. And let me just tell you that the opening day party, I hope many of you will join us there, is going to be on Pi Day, 314, 3.141. Sorry, we got very nerdy at the Human Rights Commission and library joint task force. We also felt like Pi was a great metaphor, I think, for being welcoming. You take a pie to your neighbors when you're welcoming them to the community. So, yeah, so that is the day of our party to open up the space.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate it. And I just want to thank you and congratulate you on all of your work to make sure that our temporary location is welcoming for everyone. I think you've done an excellent job with that, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Young?
Hello.
Hi.
So I have a follow-up question, actually, about your opening ceremony.
Yeah.
So I'm reading through this, and so you look like, it looks like you're included, you have counsel, who probably, several counsel will probably be there, the lab, staff, and HRC members. And I appreciate that you are working on trying to make the temporary library space as inclusive and as welcoming as possible, considering the number of people who are very unhappy with the selection of location. So under number one, I don't see any mention of working specifically with anybody from the LGBT community or any of the organizations. And I was hoping maybe you, or maybe Ms. Bennett would be able to speak to that.
Sure. So I have been approached by many members of the community, and, you know, many members who are either allies or are members of the LGBTQ community. And, you know, my question for everyone is how do we make that space welcoming and inclusive? I spoke to the Gay-Straight Alliance at South Salem High School recently. They felt like the things that we had been talking about met what they would be hoping for to that end. I also met with a concerned community member with the mayor and Gretchen, and I asked the same question, how do we make it feel welcoming and inclusive in there? And safety was a major concern. And we take a lot of pride in how safe we can make our library, and we work really hard on having that, including security officers, and just generally trying to make the environment as welcoming and safe as we can.
One additional follow-up question.
Yeah.
So within the Human Rights Commission, there's the LGBTQ plus task force. Were they involved at all with any of the, any of these three activities that were planned?
One of the task force members is on the, is the vice chair of the, not, she's not, they're not, they're not a member. They are a member of the task force, yeah. One of the people on the, on LGBTQ subcommittee is also on the task force.
Thank you.
Yeah. Of course.
Okay, any further questions? Greg, thank you.
Thank you.
When will be the last day to turn books in at this library?
January 31st.
Okay.
Yes.
And then where do you go?
Then Broadway, we're actually opening the book drop on February 1st.
Okay.
So, and we just got internet, so that means we can actually check the books in over there. So, yeah, thank you.
Very good. Any, anything else on information reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Even in light of the conversation we had earlier this evening, I would like to call up 6E.
I'm sorry?
I would like to call up 6E.
Well, they talk about it. There's no call-up.
Okay. Well, I don't know what it is, I'd like
Oh, you want to go to a public hearing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, why don't you say, I want to
I would like a public hearing on 6E. It's in my ward, it's the north campus of the Salem Hospital, it's a huge development, and it just seems to me it needs a little more discussion, although I will say in general, the, not in general, the developer has been very forthcoming. But I will tell you, we can't even, you know, we didn't even have it on paper.
I might need a second on this.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any seconds? Okay.
Sorry. I've already spoken in my piece, I don't have to say anything more.
You said more?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Nays? Okay, motion fails. Okay. All righty. Anything else under information reports? Okay, let's go to first readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 420, an ordinance relating to the authorization of revenue bonds.
Okay, Counselor Hoey? Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council conduct a first reading of Ordinance Bill Number 4-20, authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designated to issue approximately 60 million in utility